Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in the preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice stated December 30th, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could we please have the roll call?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Ms. O’Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Barton?
Present.
President Fox?
Here. Okay, and now, if, could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular and closed session of November 1st?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and now we’re moving on to reports. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. First, a reminder: The Summit Police Department is hosting a community event on Thursday, November 17th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Azucar Buffet located at 96 Park Avenue in Summit. Citizens are invited to stop by and chat with Spanish-speaking Summit Police Officers, ask questions, or voice any concerns. Free coffee and pastries will be provided to attendees. The Summit Department of Community Programs is hosting its Community Thanksgiving Meal on Thursday, November 24th, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Community Center located at 100 Morris Avenue. The catered meal will include roast turkey, traditional side dishes, pies, and other desserts, as well as coffee and a beverage service. The event will also include a game of touch football, open gym activities, a Thanksgiving-themed family movie, and arts and crafts for children. The event is free and open to all community members. Pre-registration is not required. The Senior Connections Bus will provide transportation for seniors and individuals with disabilities. Please call (908) 277-2932, or email DGUIDAJR@cityofsummit.org to schedule transportation. The event is sponsored by Brandywine Senior Living, Bristol Myers Squibb, Flag of Summit Grace, and Oaks Memorial Center. For more information, please call (908) 273-2932, or visit www.citysummitcommunityprograms.com. I went last year, the first year, and it was a wonderful event. Elegant, gracious, and full of lots of fun, and hundreds of volunteers. So if you know anyone you think might want to join, because, you know, sometimes kids are living across the country, and you want to be with family and friends, or friends, not family, please let them know. I would like to say thank the Summit Police Department for its comprehensive response to the FBI warning of a broad threat to synagogues in New Jersey. As a community, we must continue to come together to fight all forms of antisemitism, bias, extremism, and bigotry, wherever and whenever it happens. Once again, this season, there will be an annual lighting of the Holiday Tree and a menorah on the Village Green. The Miracle on Elm Street is scheduled to take place on Sunday, November 27th, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. with a rain date of December 4th. The menorah lighting is scheduled for December 18th. More information will follow in early December. And lastly, the next Mayor’s Forum on Diversity meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 29th, and will be devoted to a discussion on the growing condition of homelessness in Summit. Currently, Summit Police are working to gather information on our homeless residents. The next step will be to work with the Housing Authority and Bridges, and I hope they will join us at the Mayor’s Forum, to provide support services and ultimately apply for and obtain HUD vouchers to secure housing. As I have previously said, this is a growing concern, and I am committed to do everything I can to help find options for those who need help. It’s not a simple problem, and it’s very complicated, and there are strict laws that allow us to do certain things and prohibit us from doing other things. But it is one of my number-one priorities, so we’re working on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers for the City Administrator’s Report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. So please be advised of the following city schedule changes and closures for the Thanksgiving holiday. City offices will be closed on Thursday, November 24th, and Friday, November 25th. The following dates are parking holidays in Summit, with no fees required for on-street parking, or parking in municipal lots and garages. And that’s also on Thursday, November 24th, Friday, November 25th, and Saturday, November 26th. For more information, please visit cityofsummit.org/parking. There is a modified recycling collection for the week of Thanksgiving. Recycling collection on Monday, November 21st, Tuesday, November 22nd, and Wednesday, November 23rd is unaffected and will continue as planned. There is no recycling collection on Thursday, November 24th. Thursday collection will be pushed to Friday, November 25th, and Friday collection will be pushed to Saturday, November 26th. Recycling items should be placed at The Curb by 6:00 a.m. that morning of the resident’s weekly pickup, or the night before. Please use the See Click Fix app or Report a Concern module on the city website to report missed pickups. That’s at cityofsummit.org/ReportAConcern. Please note, garbage is still collected on holidays in Summit. More information is available at cityofsummit.org/recycle. And then finally, the transfer station’s regular schedule is Tuesday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 3:45 p.m., Saturday from 7:30 a.m. to 4:45 p.m., and closed on Sunday and Monday. The transfer station will be closed on Thursday, November 25th due to the Thanksgiving holiday. And again, more information is available at cityofsummit.org/transferstation. And that is it. Just want to wish everyone and their families festive and a safe Thanksgiving. That’s all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I have a few items. If you’re ready to part with your pumpkins, you can either place them in a biodegradable brown bag at The Curb on your regular household garbage collection day, or bring them to the transfer station. There’s a separate area for pumpkin composting on the lower level near the leaf collection area, and you can look for a sign that has pictures of pumpkins on it. The transfer station is open, as the City Administrator said, Tuesday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 3:45 p.m., Saturday from 7:30 a.m. to 4:45 p.m. The Summit Free Market will be open for an additional weekday event on Thursday, December 1st, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the transfer station located at 40 New Providence Avenue. The temporary weekday hours will be staffed by volunteers and are being added after numerous requests from members of the community to open the building during the week. Weekend Summit Free Market events are held at the transfer station on the second Saturday of every month from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Residents can bring reusable yard sale quality items to share and take whatever they may want or need at no charge. Residents must have a permit to access the transfer station to attend. Permits can be purchased online through the City of Summit Parking Services Agency. And on Saturday, November 26th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. in downtown Summit, let’s see, I seem to have missed something. Okay, I think it’s the small business, I think the holiday celebration is starting. This is, I seem to have lost part of my statement, but there was a small business Saturday is going to be on Saturday, November 26th. Many businesses will feature special offers and have special merchandise for that day. Carriages and carollers will also begin on Saturday, November 26th, and continue through December on Saturdays, so December 3rd, 10th, and 17th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Residents can enjoy holiday music and free horse and carriage rides around downtown Summit. The boarding location will be at Lyric Park on the corner of Beechwood Road and Bank Street. And then finally, Santa’s Mailbox will return to Promenade Park on Monday, November 28th, and kids of all age may drop off letters to Santa now through December 24th. So that’s it for the reports, and now we’re moving on to the presentations. So we have a presentation now from Summit’s Affordable, about Summit’s Affordable Housing Commitments by Matthew DeLorey, who’s Summit’s Assistant Director of Operations and Planning, Nancy Holm, our Affordable Housing Attorney, and Mark Lackington, who is our administrative agent for affordable housing. So over the past few months, we’ve had a number of questions from the public about Summit’s Affordable Housing Commitments. So this presentation should give everyone an overview of the city’s affordable housing obligations, what the current status is, and there’ll be an opportunity afterwards for questions. So we’re very, very lucky to have all of these very knowledgeable people here to speak to us tonight. So I’ll let you kick it off. Thank you.
Good evening, President, Mayor, Council, professionals, colleagues, and the public. You all have reported on the facts, I don’t know, go through the presentation, but I’ll definitely try to get around to make sure I talk to everybody, so.
Actually, Mr. DeLorey, it’s better for you to be speaking into the microphone.
I will do that.
Okay, thank you.
So I’m an Assistant Director in the Department of Community Services, and I’m also the city’s appointed Municipal Housing Liaison. The role of the Municipal Housing Liaison is to act as a point of contact for the state, administrative agents, people looking to qualify. I also make sure that as we capture units or that affordable housing fees are due, that they’re processed properly. And I am joined, as Council President said, by Nancy Holm, who’s our Affordable Housing Attorney, and Mark Lackington, our Administrative Agent. The Administrative Agent’s job is largely to qualify applicants as housing becomes available, and we’re going to just go through a presentation that we put together that will hopefully sort of lay out the architecture of the plan, kind of how we got where we are and our progress so far. So just real quick, where and why. Affordable housing, as it stands, is kind of a New Jersey thing. It is mandated by the state and the court’s established obligation for us to provide opportunities, realistic opportunities to produce affordable housing in New Jersey. It came about in 1975. There was a Mount Laurel decision, and it was decided that we needed to do what we could to help people develop housing where they worked. So out of that was born an affordable housing obligation that municipalities in New Jersey, each one, has. Just a little bit of history. Once upon a time, there was the Coalition on Affordable Housing. This was a state agency. It basically created uniformity. It was born out of the Fair Share Act. And it was a state agency that provided numbers to the various municipalities so that they could understand what their obligation was, and then to be able to meet those things. They created what are called rounds. These are years in which housing obligation numbers were created so that municipalities could, in a sense, do what they could to create those realistic opportunities for development. Rounds one, I think, was 1987? Give me a second.
1985?
1987 to 1993. Round two was 1987 to 99. And then, as we progressed, the two, round one and two, combined into one round, which was called the Prior Round. And so as COA, the state agency, began to develop its round-three numbers, they were challenged 2005. They continued to be challenged all the way up till around 2015, when the Superior Court of New Jersey basically declared COA defunct, that they could not establish the numbers that were necessary for municipalities to be able to provide their realistic opportunities. And so it was turned over to the courts. So COA was basically declared non-functioning, and the court said municipalities will work through the courts to figure out their round-three obligation. So it was COA, and then basically, round three, went into litigation. I’m going to talk a little bit about what happened from 2015 to now. In 2015, as I said, the Supreme Court of New Jersey required municipalities to file a declaratory judgment action to satisfy their affordable housing obligation, while simultaneously naming the Fair Share Housing Center, and this is a standalone nonprofit, it’s not a state agency, but giving them the ability to weigh in and participate in towns establishing through the courts what their obligation was. So in July of 15, Summit filed its DJ action and was granted immunity for Mount Laurel lawsuits, which, if you have questions, we can answer at the end, and if anyone does have questions, we’re happy to answer them. In October of 16, we entered into a settlement agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center. Again, that was that organization who was litigating and advocating on behalf of housing. In 17, the court approved the city’s amended housing element and fair share plan with conditions from our court master. Summit’s housing element and fair share plan was amended in 18, and then in January of 2019, the court granted Summit its final judgment of compliance and repose, which protected Summit from Mount Laurel lawsuits through July of 2015.
2025.
Excuse me, 2025. So again, New Jersey state-required affordable housing obligation was once administered by an agency of the state. There was uniformity. They tried to get round-three numbers out. That did not happen due to a series of litigations, and then it eventually was just thrown to the courts, so that every municipality on its own was engaged in litigation to come to what their numbers were. So let’s talk a little bit about how the numbers were established. Fair Share was coming to the court saying, “We know exactly how much every municipality owns.” Oh, excuse me. A lot of municipalities hired their own experts because they wanted the opportunity to tell the courts as well, “Well, wait a second. That’s one opinion, but there are also other opinions.” On this chart, I just kind of want to walk through why these are two different colors, because later, we’re going to talk about two kinds of obligation: a rehab obligation and a new construction obligation. While the new construction is broken in two pieces, I want to draw your attention to the new construction perspective need. You can see Fair Share Housing said, “Well, Summit owes 1,446,” and the professional that was hired by the municipalities, a kilometer of municipalities, said 183. So you can see that in the throes of court negotiation and agreements, a lot of people were coming to the table declaring, “This is how much everyone owes,” and towns were left to go into litigation to come to a conclusion about what they owed. So what did Summit end up coming out with in their obligation? The rehab obligation is 131, and I’m going to detail what rehabilitation obligation is, but it arrived at 131. And then the new construction, the combination of those two numbers, comes to 738. The 1,446 recommended by Fair Share can be seen as the number 567 in this slide. So the combination, the rehabilitation is 130, and the new construction obligation, as was settled and approved by the court, is 738 units. Okay, let’s talk just briefly about rehabilitation. So a rehabilitation obligation is taking existing housing that is substandard, where it’s either owned or rented by a qualified affordable household, and we are basically investing money from the trust to rehabilitate that unit. But it does have to be a major system: HVAC, roof. It can’t just be, this is not about fixing up, painting, new carpet and couches. These have to be substantial investment, and the minimum had to be 10,000 per unit. Okay? We are part of our Union County Rehab Program, and it is interesting to note, if people are watching on TV or here in the audience, if you’re aware of anyone who would qualify as a low or moderate income, you can apply through the County Rehab Program, and you would be able to potentially qualify to have a major system in your home rehabilitated. So that’s the rehabilitation. I don’t have a slide on our progress, but I will tell you, out of the 131 units, we have restored 40. So we have restored 40. Okay? But I think what people are most curious about is the math on the units, and so we’re going to dive a little deeper into our unit obligation. So there are a lot of ways you could probably explain these numbers. So this is how we’ve chosen to kind of break them down, and I’m going to talk you through it. There are also slides later in the presentation that sort of give a much more broad view on this, but we’re going to just start with these two objectives. So of the 738, objective one are sort of long-term. Obviously, you’re not going to complete 738 units in any short period of time. This is going to take a while to get to. So 738. Now, through development, the city has established 75 of those units completed, and I’m going to show you a slide in a minute what those 75 are and how we got there. And that brings us down to 663. The second objective in the agreement was that while Fair Share felt, “Yes, this is good that we are making progress in the city, we’ve agreed on a number,” this has been in litigation for a very long time, and we want units built. And so a second objective is 50 units by 2025. So in this slide, we’ve taken the 50, and we’ve moved them over to objective two. So you have 613 for objective one, which are long-term, and then 50 for objective two. So that’s a total of 645 units. All right? 613 long-term, and 50 by 2025. So when I talked about the credits, we put together a little slide here that shows you what the 75 are. I’m going to let the Affordable Housing Attorney explain rental bonuses, because they’re a little above my head, but nine of those units of the 75 credit were rental bonuses. 26 was an Elizabeth Regional Contribution Agreement. You are no longer permitted to do this, but back in the day, you could fund the building of units in another municipality that needed them. So Summit funded the building of 26 units in Elizabeth that needed housing units, to which the city was given credit. 50 Parmley Place, 120 Morris Avenue, 13 North Street, these are addresses in the City of Summit. You can see Sunrise Assisted Living. These are all projects that have been built in the city, to which completed came off the total of the 738. So those are the credits that we received. And then objective two in the agreement, it says that Summit shall take all reasonable steps needed to achieve the goal of facilitating the construction of 50 new rental or ownership affordable units with the city in 100% scattered-site affordable housing developments. This is not building a 50 complex building. The city, and rightfully so, said these should be spread out across the city so that people living in these housing units would be woven into the fabric of the community. Again, these are working people who want to be near, live where they work, et cetera. So again, we have those two objectives. And the next slide, I’m going to talk us through sort of the math on the two objectives. So this first column is the projects that have taken place and/or where the numbers start to draw down. Objective one, you’ll see our long-term goal, starting at 738, and then objective two. So I’m going to start at 738. At the top, they’re under objective one, long-term, and we’ll see that that new construction, affordable housing obligation, as was agreed, was 738. With our credits, it was brought down to 663, and then we’re going to take the 50, and we’re going to move them into objective two. Those are the 50 units to be built through the round three of 2025. Okay? There are a series of projects, and we’re going to go into detail on the left here: 412 Morris Avenue, the Habitat Project, Summit Avenue, and 21 Ashwood Court, that are drawing down on the 50 new units by 2025. So long-term, 613 from 738, and then of the 50, we have 18 that have already come online or are proposed to come online, which brings us to 32. 613 plus 32 is 645. So at the moment, we stand at a total obligation of 645. 613 is objective one. Those are our long-term. And then objective two, 50 new units, we are down to owing 32. So what progress have we made on the 50? So as many of you are aware, 146 Morris Avenue is a Habitat Project. You are able to actually sign up to volunteer. We would encourage the community to do so in groups of 10. You can sign up with Morris Habitat. It’s a great place to volunteer. You can do a workday with colleagues, with your neighbors, et cetera, to get in there and help build some of those houses. 123, 127 Summit Avenue was a larger project, to which three units were born. Ashwood Court was part of the Habitat settlement. Just a very brief overview: When Habitat went to build their project, there was, Ashwood Court is a dead end. The initial proposal had the exit for the Morris Habitat coming out on Ashwood Court, and through a settlement, the city, the neighbors, and Morris Habitat, they were able to establish that it would remain a cul-de-sac, that entrance and exit would be on Morris Avenue, and that the city would be able to build two affordable housing units on Ashwood Court. And then 412 Morris Avenue. So this is our progress on the 50. These are the 18 that exist. And when we start to talk about, well, where will future units come from, there are a couple mechanisms that we’ll go into next to talk about how that happens. So what are those mechanisms? Well, first, there are two adopted ordinances on the books. These were put into law, and they basically are residing so that as development occurs in the city, these are mechanisms by which you could capture units. The first is an overlay zone. So for example, if you’re in a neighborhood where there is a certain set of density and setbacks and et cetera, that zoning remains, but an overlay zoning is placed on it so that should somebody want to develop in a different way, they do have the right to do it. It’s not required. It doesn’t change the owner. It could never be developed, but should that be the choice of someone who wishes to develop, there are a new set of standards. So that’s called an overlay zone. There are seven in the city, and they are detailed in the Affordable Housing Plan specifically where the neighborhoods are. None of those units, however, can contribute to the 50, with the exception of overlay seven. Overlay seven is actually the Morris Habitat Project, and that does count 12 units toward the 50. So the overlay zone is one way in which that long-term goal is established, through overlay zones, where should someone choose to develop there, there could be units captured. The second is a mandatory set-aside ordinance. So anywhere in the city, somebody goes to develop five or more units, depending on whether it’s sale or rental, a percentage of those, a percentage of the development has to be affordable. It’s 15% if the project is rental, it’s 20% if it’s owned. So very simple math. If I do a project, then it’s 100 units, and it’s going to be rental, that would deliver 15 units. If it were owned, and it would be 20%. If it’s a total of 100, it would be 20 units. So as development occurs in a certain capacity, this ordinance is sitting on the books, waiting for that development to take place, so that when it does happen, it captures units. The second, other than adopted ordinances, is redevelopment. So there are mechanisms and authorities that government has to be able to develop land, Broad Street West being an example of redevelopment. And then finally, partnerships with nonprofits. So Habitat for Humanity is an example where a nonprofit comes into a municipality, and they build affordable. Those two units on Ashwood Court will likely partner with a nonprofit in similar fashion so that those two units can be built. So those are the mechanisms on the books to capture units as development is taking place in the city. This is a very large-scale map of the overlay zones. I do have some closer-up pictures of the streets, if anyone would care to see them, but there are a total of seven. The seventh is obviously the Morris Habitat Project, which is well underway. The seventh is obviously the Morris Habitat Project, which is well underway. So when you're building and you are not producing units, you owe a fee. The city has a trust fund. So for example, when, we're not talking about putting in a new kitchen or adding crown molding, we're talking about demolishing a house and building a new home, the developer owes a COA fee. And there's a formula in which they pay that fee. So that's the residential development fee. The state also has a mandatory non-residential development fee. This is anywhere, let's say, a commercial entity comes before the zoning board because they want to build something much bigger, and they start to add density or volume to the building. That volume becomes an additional fee that they pay. That's the non-residential development fee. So as development's happening, if your bike shop obviously isn't going to produce units, but you're putting on a second story, that's going to produce a non-residential development fee. And so in a sense, when the spending plan was created, you're deciding, what do we think based on the past we would be collecting? And it was budgeted to be, over the term, $4,871,374. And to date, we're at $3,697,924, and appear to be on track. Obviously, the economy, there are a lot of things that play into how much development is happening in the city, but certainly at the moment, that's where we stand. And if we want to drill down a little deeper, these are sort of the annual goals for what you would collect from residential. So that's budgeted at $190,000, $152,000. Non-residential, $183,900. And then interest on the trust is also calculated, and that sits at $4,894 a year. Now, every year, what we actually take in is different, again, depending on development, but across the years, this is what's been projected. And you have certain things you are and are not allowed to spend on. You can't, you have categories in which you are able to spend this money. The first is that rehabilitation. So we talked about 131 units at $10,000 a unit, so there's $1,310,000, which you can spend and have an obligation to rehabilitate those units. Affordability assistance is another category. I would let probably Mark talk a little bit more about the nuances of that, but there are instances where an HOA fee, or where someone is going to miss a payment, or there's certain issues, you can provide assistance to those people. That is an acceptable means of spending out of the trust. 20% max revenue on administration, attorneys, planners, all the things necessary to execute on the plan. And then development. So the city contributed from its trust fund for Morris Habitat to help get those 12 units off the ground, that there was a contribution from the trust that the city participated in. And that's part of what that funding is for, to make sure that units come online, and then that money is for its purpose, which is to generate units. So a couple takeaways. Every municipality in New Jersey is mandated to create realistic opportunities for affordable housing. Number two, this was a state agency. It was uniform, everyone knew what their numbers were, and in 2005, when round three got challenged, it has literally gone on and on and on and on. And I think to some degree, that's why perhaps the public can sometimes be caught off guard because they're thinking, why is this happening all of a sudden? Well, there's been litigation for so long that it's taken a while for these machines to kick into place, but at the end of the day, it is the fulfillment of an obligation, and it is led by a court agreement. It is no longer under the auspices of COA. Revisiting our obligations, it's the two, rehab and new construction. Rehab is set at 131 units, new construction at 738. And again, for the purpose of tonight, we're sort of looking at it at that long-term objective, getting that 738, which is now at 613, down. And then we have 32 more affordable housing units to reach that 50-unit goal by 2025. And really, at the end of the day, between our ordinances and redevelopment and partnering with nonprofits, the city has an obligation to pursue the mechanisms to capture fees and units in a way that we fulfill this court agreement that we have. And that, in a nutshell, is the loose architecture of the plan, our numbers, where we're at, et cetera. And at this point, if people have questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much. I'm going to open it up to counsel first, and then we'll let the public ask questions. Counselmember Barton.
Yeah. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Matt. This was helpful. So we have, and I don't know if it's for Matt or Mark or Nancy, I have a bunch of questions. So we have this huge number of more than 600 units of unmet need, right? But Summit doesn't have that much space or undeveloped land. So through the process of negotiation and thinking realistically about what could be done in a fair amount of time, that's how we ended up with the 50 new units by 2025 that's in our agreement with Fair Share. Since this was before I was on council, is that a fair characterization of how we got to this agreement?
Yes, without making it more complicated than it needs to be.
Okay.
This is very complicated. I will try to, I eat, sleep, and breathe this, so I will try to make it as simplified as I possibly can. Yes, so Summit lacks vacant developable land. And what happens is, you go through what is called a vacant land adjustment. And what that number, then what you do is you evaluate what land is remaining within the city, and you devise a number based on inclusionary development, which is a 20% set-aside. So if a parcel can hold 20 units, then you get a number of 20% of those units will be your affordable housing obligations. That's an easy way of looking at it. So Summit actually has completely met that part of the obligation, but what is, because Summit has built affordable housing throughout the years. What the 50-unit obligation is actually unique to Summit. And as Matt said, we are kind of in the Wild West with the litigation. Under COA, you had certain rules. In the courts, we were left to our own devices through negotiation with Fair Share Housing Center to come up to a settlement agreement. And Fair Share Housing Center required these 50 units by 2025, as least complicated as possible.
Okay. And those 50 count toward the unmet need that's still over 600?
Correct.
Right? Okay. So I want to go through some of the housing element and Fair Share Plan in more detail because it forms the basis of everything else that was discussed tonight. So if people are looking at the website, at our Fair Share Housing, at our Housing Element and Fair Share Agreement, it's page 100 of the PDF, and it's paragraph 13. So during the period between now and July 1, 2025, Summit shall take all reasonable steps needed to achieve the goal of facilitating the construction of 50 new rental ownership affordable units within the city in 100% scattered site affordable housing developments, subject to the following parameters. So A, the first thing underneath that, is at least half of the 50 units shall be available to families. What does that mean? Does that just mean that they can't be age-restricted?
Yes.
Or is it a certain number of people?
No. Families means non-age-restricted or not restricted either through developmental disability or other restrictions. So basically, it's open to the general public. A senior can occupy that unit, but it's not restricted to seniors.
Okay. Understood. And then B says Summit shall not be required to facilitate construction of a single 50-unit all-affordable development. So that just means we're not looking for one big building here. We're looking for development all around the city, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then C is, upon completion and compliance with applicable laws and rules, Summit shall receive credits against this 50-unit goal for the pending development of Habitat for Humanity. So that basically is just saying the 12 that we've just done, or that are being constructed right now, count toward the 50-unit goal, correct?
Yes, and that was specifically exempted because it does have an overlay zone.
Okay. And then under G, which is now, we're on page 101 of that document, between the sixth and 10th year, the city shall make all reasonable efforts to facilitate the actual construction of the developments needed to achieve the goal of 50 new affordable units.
Yes.
So that's, we're in that amount of time now, right? We're between the sixth and 10th year. So can you just, because I think it's something that people in the community want to hear, can you talk about what reasonable efforts actually means? What are some things that could be considered all reasonable efforts to a judge?
Sure. So in the Mount Laurel framework, all reasonable efforts would be using every mechanism available to create affordable housing and seeing what works the best for the City of Summit. Because the City of Summit does not have vacant developable land, to create a 50-unit building with all affordable units in it, the best way for the City of Summit to capture these units in a way that is cost-effective is through redevelopment. That's probably the main, that would be the main mechanism for the City of Summit, because there is no vacant land to do a standalone project. And through inclusionary development is the best bang for your buck because the developer is subsidizing the unit. Currently, right now, throughout the state of New Jersey, it costs approximately $2,000 to $300,000 per unit on average to construct an affordable unit. So it's very expensive.
Okay.
So, and that's without the land. That's the city buying the land separately and donating it to a nonprofit developer, but that's just the construction costs alone. And in some places, it's higher. I've had a developer come to me and say, he's spending approximately $475,000 per unit right now.
Okay.
So.
So I guess the next couple of questions are basically, what comes next here in January of 2026? What happens either way? What happens if we get to the 50? What happens if we don't get to the 50? You know, what happens here?
So like I said, we're still kind of in the Wild West. We don't know if COA is going to make a comeback for round four. I hope they do. We do need some new rules. We'd like some uniformity. We'd like a little bit of settling of the chaos. If COA does come back for round four, it's very hard to say because we don't know what the new rules will be. The more units, the better. That you have satisfied is always better for the council on affordable housing. And we're also, in round four, going to get a new number so that 567 that was created in the third round is going to have additional units added on.
Okay.
So every 10 years, there's a new obligation. It depends on your growth, it depends on a lot of other things.
Okay. So best case, I guess, is COA's reconstituted, people are appointed, they come up with new rules. That would be the best case. The worst case, I think, would be, what would be the worst case or the middle of the road, assuming COA does not exist? And, you know, what are some of the things that a judge might decide?
Sure.
You know, at that point?
Yeah. So I mean, I would say COA is the best-case scenario. Having COA back would be the best-case scenario. Probably middle-of-the-road to not-so-great would be back in the courts. But what would happen if we go back to the courts is we take the settlement agreement back with us to apply for another declaratory judgment action, and the judge is going to look through it and say, city, what did you do? You know, did you, it looks like you have, you know, how have your overlay zones worked? How has your mandatory set-aside ordinance worked? Have you completed the 50 new units?
Okay.
So we would make our best case to the court, saying, look at what we've done. This is, we've advertised for this, we've zoned for that. This is how we have satisfied that obligation.
Okay. And can you just touch on the concept of a builder's remedy?
Sure. Sure. So a builder's remedy was created by the second Mount Laurel Supreme Court decision, which was, which created a penalty if a municipality didn't satisfy their affordable housing obligation. At that time, we were still in the courts, trying to figure out those numbers, much like where we are now. We've basically gone back to between 1975 and 1983. So we're back in the courts, trying to figure this all out by ourselves. And the builder's remedy was a way for a builder to force compliance by a municipality. They would come in and say, look, Judge, this town is not satisfying their obligation. I can come in and build the affordable housing, just give me this usually grossly overdense project with an affordable housing set-aside. So that was, and the courts, if they found that the municipality wasn't satisfying their obligation, would award that project.
Okay. Has that happened recently?
Yes, it happens all the time. Yep.
Okay. Okay. So shifting gears just a little bit, and then I promise I'll be done. Just to the housing authority, a couple of questions on the housing authority. So housing authority units don't count toward existing units because of the residency preference that we have. Would taking, let's say, 32 of them, right, and removing the residency preference, count towards the balance that we have, or no, because they're already constructed?
Toward the 50.
Toward our new construction?
To the 50-unit.
Yeah. If we just said, we're taking these out of the residency preference, or?
No, they would not count toward the 50 new units because they have to be new units. What would have to happen is, basically, you're taking a market-rate unit and creating an affordable housing unit, would be one way of looking at it. That's called a market-to-affordable program, through redevelopment, where you're creating new units. Or the city purchased, well, yeah, it would be the, or if a nonprofit does already have land, they would propose a project that way.
Okay. And then would it be possible, if the housing authority wanted to build more units, if they didn't have a residency preference, would they count toward our new construction?
Yes, generally, yes. Sometimes the HUD rules don't jive with the COA rules. You know, it would be nice if they did. So occasionally, some of the units don't match up, but yes, for the most part, generally speaking, yes. As long as they don't have a residency preference, I think Fair Share Housing Center would agree that that was appropriate.
Okay. That was it for me, and I took a bunch of time, so thank you.
Are there any other questions for members of council? Counselmember Levine?
Sure, I have some questions. Thank you for your presentation. It was well structured and helpful. The fairness hearing that was in 2016?
Yes.
Whereby the number of affordable units that we were asked to build was down-regulated because it was determined that the, and Greg spoke a lot about this, that there was a lack of vacant and developable land.
Yes.
That was during round three, when COA was still existed, and they've since been disbanded. Now, when you say we're due for a round four, do we have a reasonable expectation because more and more building has occurred since 2016 to now? I mean, I would, or do you have a reasonable expectation that those numbers would be down-regulated further?
At this point, it's hard to say, and I'm not the expert that can do the projections. That's not, that's definitely not my area of expertise. It's certainly, the round three number is actually very large because of all the litigation. It spans from 1999 to 2025, when it was supposed to be 10-year increments. So we're looking at a very large period of time, so that number is on the larger side. I don't expect them to be that large this time because hopefully, fingers crossed, that it's only a 10-year period this time, and we're not fighting for 26 years. So.
So given the potential for changing of this number, how it feels dynamic to me, and also given the description of a climate of a Wild West, how or why should we take these numbers and embark on significant legal and financial journeys based on these numbers, when they do seem to be subject to change?
The prior round number will not change. So that number will always stay the same because that was rounds one and two. And then the third round number, we don't know what's going to happen because we don't know what COA is going to do with that number.
If there's going to be a COA.
If there's going to be a COA. So, I mean, I hold out hope that there is one, so I like to be positive. But, yeah, so, and then... But, yeah, so, and then, we also don't know, if we are back in the courts and have to hire experts and duke it out again, we don't know what that number is going to be. So, it's, it's difficult, but also, the risks of not participating in the litigation, if it does go back to litigation, I hope it doesn't, on everyone's behalf, that I hope we're back in COA. You know, the risks outweigh the benefits. If you, if there is, there is a builder that has a significant portion of land, they can come in and, and force you to comply. So, it's always better, I think, even as frustrating as it has been in the, in the third round, I believe it's always more cost-effective to comply with that obligation than to have a developer dictate.
Sure.
How you, how you're going to develop.
I had just have a follow-up question to one of Councilman Vartan's questions. Regarding the affordable housing that's now set aside for residents, I do understand that we have a significant waitlist for those units and that it would create other priority, other problems if we were to look into reallocating that to non-residents. But I guess my question is, it's for you, but it's also, I guess, well, for you at the moment. But if we were to look at it not as all or none, but could that be broken down and say one-third? Because the idea is to chip away at what we need to provide as far as affordable housing, so that maybe it doesn't need to be done in one fell swoop, so to speak, but in smaller, scattered ways, I think is the language. But could that be divided where some could then be rehabilitated? Where we fix one major system as was presented to us, and then they would be, they would count towards the minimum? Is that, is that something? Is there any way that that pool of housing could count? Even if it were just a piece?
Currently, the Summit Housing Authority units can count toward rehab. And we can fix, we can do upgrades to those units to meet the rehabilitation obligation. Because Matt talked about the new construction versus the rehab. So that, that's definitely a possibility. I know that we have had meetings with, with the Housing Authority about those, but I think there's other budgetary things going on right now, so.
And for the record, I'm not talking about all of the units to be given priority to non-residents, just a small fraction. So there'd be a meaningful impact on our, what we, what we need to build from an affordable housing standpoint.
And I do have, I have another municipality that I represent where we have taken some of the Housing Authority units that have the residency preference and removed them. And it was only a fraction of the units within the city. And, and we're in the process of creating a new, and it doesn't mean that Summit residents wouldn't get those units either. It means they would just be in a different lottery, and the only preference they would get is that they're in the housing region, not, not that they're Summit residents. So, and they, and in this municipality, what we did was, you still had the waiting list for the rest of the Housing Authority units, and you stayed on that one, but you had the opportunity to apply to the, to the ones that we were removing the residency preference for. So, it doesn't mean that a Summit resident wouldn't get one. It just means that they're not at the top of the list. So, but that's always, that's a value judgment.
Sure. No, that's an important value judgment. I recognize that. I don't say it lightly.
No, no, absolutely. But it is possible. And I've had Fair Share agree to that, so.
Go ahead, Dan.
So I'm confused. Sorry. It's very confusing, so I apologize.
No, 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 please, it's me. If you took a couple of the units from, just say, the Gallo Building, and took the residential preference away, they would not count towards the 50 that we need to, the 30?
That is correct.
Right. They would not. But what you're saying is if you do the rehabilitation, they would count?
No, they're, that's two separate things. So, we have the rehab obligation.
Now I'm confused.
Sorry. All right, so.
Do you want to pull up that slide that shows everything again?
So rehab is completely different from the 50 units. The 50 units is a new construction obligation.
Correct. And so shifting from preferential to non-preferential does not go towards the 50 new unit obligation?
Correct. Because they're existing units within the city.
Correct.
And they're already existing affordable units within the city. They would go toward the objective one if you converted them from the residency.
Oh, they would go toward the long-term objective?
Yes. They would go toward the long-term objective, but the 50 new units, they would not, because they're existing affordable housing.
So that doesn't help us by 2025?
It does not. But it's, it does.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you.
It definitely chips away, it tips away at the bigger number.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So.
Okay. Are there any other questions from members of Council? Councilmember Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. Thanks for the presentation. It was really good. I had a couple of questions about the nonprofit organization partnerships. Have you seen cities in this area meet their obligations from objective two through nonprofit partnerships? In, in, larger than what we've seen on, for example, 146 Morris Avenue? Large, larger projects?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, there are, I have 70 to 80-unit, 100% affordable projects being constructed by nonprofits. There's a specific, there are a lot of nonprofits that build the larger-scale projects, and then there are some that specialize in the smaller conversions of duplexes, four units, or conversion of a larger house into a group home. So there's, there's lots of, there's lots of specialized nonprofits for that. And Habitat is one of them. There's several that specialize in the smaller-scale rehabilitation and reconstruction of units.
Sure, okay. So, I know that Summit has a preference, maybe a requirement, for these units to be dispersed across the city. What is the exception for Habitat for Humanity, for example, for those 12 units? Why was that together?
Exception?
Instead of having those be dispersed? It's in one, it's in one section?
Oh, I got you. Okay. Well, I mean, it's always prepared, I think, smaller scale, and I consider the 12-unit Habitat project a smaller-scale affordable housing project. That is, that's actually a quite large project for Habitat, but I believe it's just the size of the property why, why it's a larger project for them. But, I mean, a 12-unit project is still, I would say, on a smaller scale. Because like I said, I have, I have municipalities that are building 80 to 100-unit projects at a time, so.
And then, a little bit off this topic, a teardown and a rebuild, is that, that's considered a new unit towards the 50?
Yes. Even the, I mean, if, as long as it wasn't an existing affordable housing unit.
Right.
Within the city. Yeah. So if, if you had a developer come in and, and raise, raise a house and put a two-unit, a two-family unit, that would be a new unit.
Sure. Thank you.
So I have one follow-up question. Councilmember Miniger asked about other communities and, and nonprofits developing affordable housing. And you said you have some with, that are doing 80 or 100 units. I'm assuming that those are not communities like Summit that don't have a lot of vacant land?
Correct. Yes. Those take several acres, and, yeah, because you need parking and all of those things.
So we are not a candidate for that kind of development? We really have to get it through scattered or something no larger than a Habitat-size project, really?
Right. That is correct.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from members of Council? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you. Okay. So I wrote my questions down as you were talking. So, is there a preference for affordable housing to do rental over purchase?
Yes. There are incentives, Matt touched on it earlier, about rental bonuses. There are incentives through COA's rules that we have now that incentivize family rental units, because that is definitely the greatest need within, within the state. So, there are, in our settlement agreement, half of our obligation needs to be met with rental units. So, and preferably family.
Is there, do we track in terms of the families that come in and a success rate? And the only reason I'm asking this is because I believe in purchasing, and if affordable housing is really about building equity, long-term equity in someone's life, I think that purchase is really the ultimate goal. So is there some demographic, is there some statistics around how successful affordable housing rentals is versus potentially creating opportunity for people to purchase?
Matt, do you, I mean, Mark, do you know? I'm going to yield to him. He's the expert on that.
Affordable housing rental units in the state of New Jersey are unique in that they do not require an annual recertification of their income level after, so once they qualify for the affordable unit as a low and moderate income family, they are, they're allowed to continue to re-lease that year over year. And we do see, just by the nature of income growth and family size changes and things like that, we do see people moving out of those units. We're not, we don't have a good mechanism in place, and I say this statewide, to track the, where they land. We have anecdotal evidence, because we're interacting with the families about, you know, that they've, you know, moved on to another unit, sometimes it's rental, sometimes it's ownership. But there's not a mechanism in place to really prove out the theory of, you know, this being a sort of a stepping stone to stable ownership housing.
Right. I think it would be creative thinking that if you, because purchasing is often like a townhome or so forth. I mean, you can also purchase apartments. But I would think that you would give more credence to someone who could potentially get into a multifamily, five-family house. And it's less housing, but you're also creating wealth that way. So just, just my two cents. Do you know if we create 46 apartments on Morris Avenue and River Road? I'm assuming that's the unmet, unmet need. It's not going to count towards the obligation.
No, that is not a proposal. This is a, it's a, an application before the board. Those should be new units.
Yes.
Matt, can you, if you're going to answer.
Yeah, thanks.
It was in the overlay.
That is an application before the zoning board, which has been reduced in density to 46 units, which would produce approximately seven new construction units, which would count toward the 50 if approved.
Okay. So they're not in the overlay zone?
No.
Okay. And out of curiosity, why would the Habitat for Humanity count towards our obligation if it's in an overlay zone?
Because we specifically negotiated that it would count toward the 50 new units because it was, it was being proposed at the time. It was an overlay zone, I believe, historically. I don't, forgive me, I was not, I was not the one who negotiated the agreement, so I'm just going by what I've researched. And I believe that was there for a while, and so, the overlay zone, and so, if the overlay zones were not, were going to be exempted from the 50 units, we had to specifically, we were, we had to specifically say that Habitat had to be, was going to be counted toward the 50.
Council President, I may be able to add a little bit more since I was a part of that discussion and negotiation. At the time, Habitat was proposing that project, but it was far from a done deal. And so, we knew the number of units at the time, that's why it was specifically stated in the settlement agreement. However, there was always the possibility that, that may not happen. So that's why thereafter, the overlay zone was created, because it was still not a done deal, they had not acquired it. And so, in case that happened, the overlay zone was there. But we always knew, at the time, in 2016, we knew that those units were on the table, and we wanted to get credit for that with the 50 units. So that's, that's essentially how it happened.
Great. Okay. And just to.
I have just a quick, real quick, just a, just a note on the zoning board. That is a quasi-judicial board. It has its own attorney. There's no single elected official that may sit on that board. And so, that the obligation of the city is to produce units, it can't depend on the zoning board to make that happen. That complex, if approved, would fall into the multifamily set-aside ordinance. So that's when we talked about the adopted ordinance, how that ordinance would capture units through development like that versus redevelopment, where the council has more control over the process. So that's the distinction, where the council has some opportunity to drive the process versus a zoning board, which the two should not meet and aren't one another connected.
Okay. Okay. If someone has a house, and they want to convert it in the overlay zone, and I don't know if this was to your question, and they want to convert it to affordable housing, so someone says, I have a rental, I want to be a part of the solution, I want to convert my house to affordable housing, I'll deed it for 30 years. Can that happen? And what would be the process?
That's a good question.
It would be a market for affordable rental.
Right.
That can happen anywhere.
Right. That can happen anywhere within the city. Yeah. So even if it's, so the overlay zone has certain requirements to it. So it gives a, an increase in density to develop that property. So if it's just a freestanding home, and all they want to do is convert it into affordable units, that would count toward the, toward the new units. If they take advantage of the overlay zoning, that would not count. Because the overlay zoning is meant to capture long-term units as the city redevelops. That would be where a developer would start buying lots within an overlay zone so that they could build a bigger project, which would create more affordable units. So that's more of a future as the city, small R, redevelops. But just through market forces, that's, and that's why, that's why overlay zones, you can't, you can't count on them to create that, the affordable units by 2025.
Okay. So if someone could create an affordable home.
Yes.
Outside of an overlay zone?
Absolutely.
That would, okay. So just, I just want to make sure I understand. So it would count towards our numbers, but if they were in an overlay zone, they could still do that, but it would go towards our unmet need?
Yeah, it's all unmet need. Sorry. Yes. But if they took advantage of the increased zoning for the overlay zone, then it would not count toward the 50. If you're just converting one house that is already there, that would count toward the 50.
And is there any, would zoning review it to say, we don't want affordable, someone to convert affordable housing? Could, would zoning say no to that?
We would probably, if someone had to do that, we would probably enter into a developer's agreement, the city would, and, and hire a developer and purchase the property from that person.
Okay. Sorry, I have a few questions. So when I sell my house and someone purchases, purchases it, is there a development, is there any fee associated with selling and purchasing of a regular house? Okay.
No.
Okay.
No, the only fee, the realty transfer fee goes into the, the pot at Trenton. There's a separate Affordable Housing Trust Fund in Trenton that goes all over the state. And that's where the realty transfer fee, when you sell the house, goes.
Okay. Last and final question. This is a big question. Okay. So in the agreement, and I apologize because I'm not as fluent as you either, on page 27, it talks about the 36 units. I'm in paragraph one, and it says, "The settlement agreement entitles the city to apply for 50 affordable housing credits to be applied to the address of the city's 36-unit RDP." So, my understanding is, when I read through this, I, my understanding is, is that, and we talk a lot about this, our RDP is actually 36. That 50 is an objective, but not an obligation. And that we're actually closer to, and I don't have the number, we actually do have a credit of six to nine. Yes. We have a credit. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that, because there's a lot of discussion about that.
Yes. Actually, the Affordable Housing 101 document that, I believe, is it on the website yet?
It's on the website.
Okay. That goes into a lot more painstaking detail on how all of that works. The 36, so when we were discussing how you take all the remaining vacant land, and then you decide how many affordable housing units it can yield, that's, we came up with a number of 36. Okay. The city had so many credits from past affordable housing initiatives that we've already met that number. So we met the RDP of 36 already, plus 13 surplus units going toward that long-term objective number. Okay. Yeah. So that, that got us down to 663. Rather than bore everyone with the excruciating details of going into that math, that's why we, we set it down this way. But, yeah, so we've already satisfied that. So if you see that number, 36, we've already satisfied that with, with affordable housing that's already been built, and credits, which are rental bonus credits. Then, on top of that, is this 50-unit obligation that's completely separate from the 36. So, I'm sorry to bore everyone with math. I apologize.
No, I think that's an important.
That's really important.
Do you, Council President? I think that's, that is an important distinction, because what you're talking about and what... and what Councilwoman Allen is talking about is the realistic development potential, right? The RDP number. And I think, I think if you're.
Which is 36.
Yes, which is 36. And I think if you're sitting there and you're thinking, "That's a realistic number," anything else other than that must be an unrealistic number, right? Like, that's just the legal terminology that we're using for that. That, it is, however, what we've agreed to is above and beyond that number. It's different, right?
Correct.
That's correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, that, I think, is just something we have to point out.
And when you say what we've agreed to, you're talking about the 50 units.
In the fair share, yeah, what we've agreed to in the, in the agreement that we have with the Fair Share Housing Center, yeah.
Yes, yes, of course. And yeah, like I said, it would be, because every municipality is unique. I don't have any, any agreement across the state. I represent clients in Salem County and Bergen County and everywhere in between. And every single settlement agreement is different. Where there was a lot more uniformity when we had, when we had COA and we could all kind of agree on, "This is your number. This is how we're going to meet it. This is how it goes." So, so, yeah, so this 50-unit number is unique to Summit.
And it's an obligation, though, not.
It's an obligation.
It's not discretionary?
It is not.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison, do you, did you have some questions?
Yes, maybe not a question, Council President, through you. I think I want to build on Councilwoman Levine's inquiring about the Summit Housing Authority and the opportunity to partner with them. And, and so, what the mayor announced in your opening remarks about vouchers and listening to Matt give a great overview of the history and the requirements of what Summit has done and how we've evaluated options. Council President, it seems like it might be a good opportunity to hear from the Housing Authority about possibilities of what can happen from their vantage point. As I heard you mention, they don't agree. HUD, what comes.
Unfortunately, no.
From the federal obligation. And I am beginning to hear some things that may be an opportunity. And I'm hoping, because I would not be in favor of what Councilwoman Levine talked about as shifting what we currently have. But I know our housing is just so old. And what might be on the horizon is, Council President, I hope you might be open and mayor to looking in to what we could look to in the future because Summit has an amazing history of private entities coming together. We have, I don't know.
Civic association.
Civic association. And that history, and it seemed like what you're talking about is bubbling up as an opportunity to help us look for ways that don't have us having to go to, well, we're going to have to go to court anyway based upon what happens with the 2025. But I like to look forward in a positive way because Summit has a really good history in going after our affordable housing. And I'm, what I'm asking for is if we could at some point have the Housing Authority. I know they give a very routine report.
Right.
Which was never any fun. But if we could ask them to be more expansive about that.
Okay, well, that's certainly something we can explore. Thank you.
And I saw you shaking your head because I think you must know something too about what's on the horizon. So, look forward to exploring that.
Okay, so.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
I'd like to get to the public.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing. I'm sorry, because this was sort of glossed over, is the Fair Share versus E-Consult. The number discrepancy is significant. And so, I think in some ways that undermines the understanding of the number. So, could you just, 10 seconds, 30 seconds, explain the difference?
Okay, so, E-Consult was hired by a consortium of municipalities when we were left with no direction on where to go. There are specific, in the Fair Housing Act, it outlines exactly how you calculate the prospective need based on building, demolitions. You know, probably know this better than I do. So, do you want to go ahead? You're more of an expert on that stuff. I do where it's not numbers, so that's.
Yeah, so, it was, it's basically the idea of having a point of view, a data set that was an answer to the Fair Share Center's numbers. That was really the, you know, the idea between the two. And it was a, you know, the methodology in which they used to come up with the numbers was really what undermined COA and got us to this point in the first place. It was always about the numbers that were, why it was in litigation for all of those years. And, you know, "You're calculating wrong. We don't like the way you're using the growth of jobs here," that sort of thing. So, E-Consult provided the data set that this consortium of towns used to argue against Fair Share Centers. And the Fair Share Center numbers are interesting because that's, that would have been sort of a default number had the town not engaged, right? So, if a developer sued for builder's remedy, that would be the number that would be, you know, theoretically working from. Of course, it's a, you know, almost impossible to find that, those units. But, yeah, it was really just a, you know, they're the expert witness for the argument in court against the Fair Share numbers.
Okay, so, with that, I'm going to open it up to members of the public. So, if anyone wants to come up and ask any questions, I'm going to ask you to keep it brief, like, three minutes because I don't want to overwhelm, you know, it's already getting late. Anyone have, no questions? Good evening.
Good evening. Claire Toth, T-O-T-H, 11 Sunset Drive. And I just want to clarify, I'm here in my individual capacity. I had a question. And the DRO, I've seen potential overlay zones that may or may not be in your list of overlay zones. And I was curious as to how that came about. Am I looking at an old DRO?
I believe they're the same, but.
Okay, because.
Are they the same?
It's a part of the DRO.
Yeah, it's, it's in the DRO. That's where you would find it.
Right, but some of them were labeled potential overlay.
Potential.
Versus overlay.
That may just be the mapping from, from the housing element of Fair Share Plan because I don't believe they were adopted yet. So, I think that they were probably just, they probably used the mapping that was already created and it probably says potential on it.
Okay, so that if a developer went into a potential overlay zone, there'd still be the set-aside requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe they're now official overlay zones. I believe they were called potential overlay zones because they weren't adopted yet, but they are all adopted now.
Okay.
They were adopted in 2017, I believe.
Yeah, they're, yes.
Okay, I downloaded the DRO in 2021. I'll have to be sure I have a current one.
I believe it's just the maps that say that, but.
Okay.
But I will check.
Okay. Okay. And I guess a practical question. If we want to do a $10,000 rehab in an existing unit, how do you interact with the property owner on that one? Does the, what if the property owner doesn't want it to happen?
Yeah, the property owner is a critical partner in any redevelopment of a rental unit. Not only are they allowing, you know, the affordability controls to be placed on the unit, but they are also agreeing to rent, to establish rents that are well below market rate rents. And with the increases that we've seen over the last couple of years, especially the gap between the affordable rents and market rate rents is a, it's a chasm. It's not even a gap. So, it would require, and a landlord that is benevolent in nature and is looking to do a good thing because this is not a money-making venture by any means to convert a unit to affordable.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Good evening.
Hi, Kevin McGoy. I guess the most crucial thing that we're trying to get across here and something that seems to be missing is this 50 units that we talk about, right? What was our obligation under the settlement agreement? Are we required to build 50 units to make sure 50 units are built? Is that our obligation?
It's to make sure that the 50 units are built using whatever mechanisms work the best for the city.
Okay, because I'm reading it and it says, "During the period from now until July 1st, 2025, Summit shall take all reasonable steps, reasonable steps, not even best efforts, a lower bar of reasonable steps, to achieve a goal of facilitating the construction of 50 new rental slash ownership affordable units within the city and 100% scattered affordable housing units." It goes on to list what those are under the following parameters. You know, we didn't have to use our own money, right? In it, it says, "The city shall not take any action or inaction to thwart development proposal unless it can demonstrate that such action or inaction would violate applicable law or construction of the development in question would violate principles of sound land use and planning." I assume that basically means that, you know, you're not going to be required to do anything outside your zoning, right? We weren't required to build it ourselves, spend any money on it, right? I mean, when I read through this, it's very obvious what it is. We were not to stand in the way of anybody who wanted to develop. We did other things in the redevelopment, in the settlement agreement, I'm sorry, where we agreed to put in ordinances that 15% of the rentals have to. So, we did all of these things. This 50-unit issue was just for us to take reasonable steps that they could be built. That's what the agreement says. It's not an obligation to have, to make sure, to ensure that 50 are constructed by 2025.
No, we need to, reasonable steps as far as COA regulations go means that we have to ensure that the, that the mechanisms are there for them to be built, either through zoning, through partnerships with developers, through redevelopment. Those are all reasonable for a municipality that is lacking vacant land.
Right.
So, so, redevelopment is probably the biggest cornerstone of that because there isn't vacant land in which the city can purchase it and build a.
Right, when you're saying redevelopment, you're saying a private owner, anybody who's got property just redeveloping it. You're not talking about a particular parcel of redevelopment. We're not required to redevelop Broad Street West to get 50 units. And that's not a requirement, especially if you're out, if you're going in zoning and everything else.
Under the COA framework, if residential units are going to be built at Broad Street West.
Yeah.
It would be unreasonable for the city to not have affordable units.
No, we have to have it, 15%.
Whatever that, whatever.
Right, it's 15%. Right, it's 15%. So, as long as we do, as long as we ensure that 15% of any new multifamily unit or any residential development over five units, and if it's, if it's rental, as long as we make sure that 15% of them, we are meeting our obligation. We are doing the reasonable steps.
Right, as long as, I don't know what the redevelopment set-aside is going to be. I don't know what the economic feasibility of it.
No, I'm talking about the settlement agreement. It's just the settlement agreement, what our obligation is under the settlement agreement is just that we ensure that as things are developed, 15% of rentals over, over five units are allocated toward affordable housing and 20% of condos are allocated towards affordable housing. That's our obligation.
It is, but all reasonable efforts according to COA standards are to look for places to redevelop, look for, there's a mention of scattered site projects. So, a market-to-affordable program would be a good, be a good plan what's currently before the zoning board would be a great.
Are we required to make sure that 50 are built by 2025?
Yes.
Okay, well, then, why does it say, "The parties recognize that Summit shall make all reasonable efforts and shall not achieve the development of 50 units of affordable sales ownership housing and 100% affordable housing developments as contemplated by the agreement and may not accomplish interim steps toward the development of those units. Public subsidies may not be available or unanticipated factors may arise. Nevertheless, Summit agrees to take all reasonable efforts to overcome barriers whether identified or not in this agreement in order to develop 50 units of affordable sales ownership." You're basically saying that we could do everything that we want. We can do all this and they just may not be built.
Correct.
Right, so we don't have.
We've had a pandemic. We've had supply chain issues. We've had all sorts of issues that are unanticipated factors. But it says, "Nevertheless, Summit agrees to take all reasonable efforts to overcome those barriers."
And reasonable efforts are defined above, which is, none of it is that we have to develop. It's what I said, we have to make sure that we don't put up any obstacles to anybody. We don't stand in the way of anybody who's building under the building regulations. We are in no obligation to ensure that 50 are built because we can't control it. We can't control what goes on, on other lands, on other people's properties. We can't, it could.
Yeah, other than, other than property owned by the city, if there's redevelopment going on, we have to ensure that we.
Do 15%, right, but it doesn't have to get us to 50. We can, if we do redevelopment under the redevelopment plan and we don't get to 50 units, this doesn't, we're not in violation of the agreement.
As long as we've taken reasonable efforts, that's.
Right, and the reasonable efforts are all defined there. It's that we have to ensure that 15% of rentals are allocated toward affordable housing. You just keep saying that we have this 50 commitment. We have this 50-unit commitment. We have people on the dais who keep saying that we have a 50, we have to build 50, we have to build 50. We do not have to build 50. We have to take reasonable efforts to facilitate the construction of 50 units by whatever. We have, we are doing that. Everything in there that's described, if you go through all the bullet points and not just handpick a couple, you'll see we are doing all of them. Are you, as our attorney, are you saying that we are not doing that to date?
No, we are.
We are, right. And if we don't get to 50?
We have to show that we've made progress toward the 50.
Right, we have to take, we have to show that we did all reasonable efforts.
Right, but we have to.
Reasonable.
Enter into agreements. We have to, we have to, we have to, if we need to, we need to rezone parcels of land for development. We have to capture.
Have we?
Yes.
Right. And if we don't get to 50?
We can do that as well.
Right, but we don't have to get to 50. My point is.
We do have to get to 50.
Oh, my goodness.
Mr. McGoy, we're not going to have this kind of back and forth. You asked your question, she answered the question.
Why, yeah, but like, she's.
Because we, no, we have to demonstrate to the court. Okay, let's say we're going back to the court. COA no longer exists, okay? We have to go back and say, "Okay, we've, we have the 18 that we've created. We have Broad Street West that has X number of units. We have, we have created a market-to-affordable program within the city." Okay, that's something that's not zoning. That's just a program that we can use the trust fund for. Because it also says in the agreement that we can utilize our Affordable Housing Trust Fund to create those units. The issue, the reason that it is worked as the way that it is is so that Summit does not have the obligation to build a 50-unit project, 100% affordable project. We have to find ways within the city to create 50 new units by 2025.
Right, that's something we agreed to. We, they agreed to, we agreed to, that we weren't going to have to build one building with 50.
Correct.
And that, and because of that, we were doing it, the private development, that's why it's dispersed is because in private development, it'll be the 15%, right?
Correct. Outside of.
That's all in there. I'm just saying that in there, it's very clear that there's no specific obligation that we have to have 50 built by 2025. But you're telling me this, this is the first I'm hearing of this. I've spoken to Joe Burgess at length. My reading of it seems pretty clear. Like, I don't know how, you seem to go back and forth on whether we had to do 50 or whether we don't have to do.
We do have to do 50.
So, if we don't, if we don't do, you're saying if we don't do 50, if 50 are not built by 2025, we're in violation?
We could be.
We are, it's yes or no? We are or we're not?
We have to put, we have to put all of the mechanisms in place.
Right, and we do that.
To create 50 new affordable.
And we have.
Whether or not they are built by 2025 is a different story. We have to.
Right, that's my point.
We have to demonstrate, just wait. We have to demonstrate developer's agreements, redevelopment, market-to-affordable program, zoning from the zoning board, use of our mandatory set-aside ordinance, development that's not inside overlay homes, but other places within a municipality. If we sit here and say, "No, we're just going to wait and see what happens."
But we're not doing that. Now, we can do all of that stuff. It simply says that. We can do all of that and not have 50 built.
Not have 50 built, but they need to be, they need to be.
We've allowed for 50 to be built. We've. We've allowed for 50 to be built, we have enough now, right? That we have, there's not enough zoning that exists that we, because we can't control what goes on in private property.
Correct.
Right, so we have to help facilitate that, which is what we do when we allow this to happen, when we allow and require the 15%. That's what our obligation is.
Mr. McGoye, I think it's time for...
But this is really, really, this is really, really important.
No, because you're just arguing with her at this point.
Well, I don't know.
She's made her point very clear, I think, and you're just badgering.
Well, she said we had to do 50, and then you're saying we're not.
You know what, I think we're done, we're going to let our attorney finish up, you know, this discussion, and then...
So you're saying we have to build 50 by 2025.
Mr. McGoye, I am telling you that we're done.
We have to put the mechanisms in place to create 50 units.
But that's different than 50 units being built.
Mr. McGoye, I've said that we're not, we're done with this.
It's important, you need to know this, you need to understand what our obligations are.
I do know this, Mr. McGoye, please sit down now.
So do we have to do 50?
Yes, we do, please sit down.
Do we have to do 50? We have to have 50 built.
Don't answer him, this is getting crazy. They have, the mechanisms are in place.
Not the mechanisms, do 50 have to be built?
But they may not be fully constructed and occupied by 2025, but they have to be, they have to be in process. The mechanisms have to be in place.
The mechanisms...
Mr. McGoye, enough.
It's whether or not we have to have 50 built, or 50 have to be in the pipeline, identified under agreement.
Mr. McGoye, you have to stop.
And that's the obligation.
Okay, I didn't see that in there, where is it?
Sit down, Mr. McGoye, you're done, you're done. Does anyone else have any questions?
Dennis White, Tulip Street. Just on a clarification, if we did not get to the 50, what are the implications in the court system for Summit for not reaching that 50?
The issue is going to be whether the court determines that we violated the second agreement.
And if they determine that, it could be a more burdensome, it could be. So it's in our best interests to accomplish what's in this plan of 50 units.
That's correct.
Right, so I would think for the city, that's in our best interest. I would also say it's a 10-year plan, and we've committed to 50, that's really five units over 10 years, and for a city like Summit with the problems we have and the affordability, I would hope that we could do that, that we wouldn't have to argue that we don't have to live up to that obligation, and I would hope we wouldn't have to use our affordable, our Summit Housing Authority units too, that we could find a way to make, you know, 50 units here in the city with nonprofit developers and get that done. I mean, it's been out there for 10 years, and we have a couple more years, so hopefully we can get there.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any other questions? Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My phone might die, so I apologize. So a couple of questions, Dory Gagman. Hi, thank you for the presentation, I've been waiting a long time to hear this, I think a lot of us have, so I appreciate you coming and doing this for us. I think, I like Dr. Levine asking about rehabbing the senior building, I think there are three areas in town that you, Mayor had mentioned that don't go to our affordable housing agreement. So if we can use those towards the next round, if we can rehab those, is that correct? If we rehab those, those can count towards whatever next round we have, is that correct?
Are you talking about the housing authority, the housing authority units?
Yes, the housing authority units.
They can't, because they have a residency preference on them, we can use them toward our rehabilitation obligation, which we could do right now. We've talked to the housing authority, I think there are other budgetary things going on right now, but that is, that is what we can use, the housing authority...
And does that go towards our 50?
No.
No?
It does not, no.
Okay, that's what you were trying to ask in the beginning, okay, so I was a little confused about that.
Sorry.
It was, yes, but that can go...
It also does not go towards the next round.
But it goes toward the long-term goal.
The next round is the long-term round, no, long-term, that's phase four, correct?
No, not if we, only if we take away the residency requirement, correct?
There's a rehabilitation obligation of 131 units, those are the ones that we fix up, so that's one goal, 131. New construction, long and short term, so you have 613 long-term, 50 short-term. If you took 30 units and said we are not age restricting these, that 30 would come off the 613, you could not use it toward the 50. So yes, you would be bringing units online for your long-term total goal, but they would not chip away at the 32, those 50 by 2025. Rehabilitation is a separate, so there's rehabilitation of 131, and then new construction, which we've broken into two categories, the 613 long-term and the short-term 50 by 2025.
Mr. Delory, I just want to clarify one thing, though, if you use money towards rehabilitation, that doesn't allow, all that gets you is rehabilitation, it doesn't put it into the other column, the long-term column.
Correct, because the only unit you can rehabilitate is one that is deed restricted. The deed restriction, the 30-year deed restriction makes it a unit. So when you build something, if, let's say, 100-unit complex, again for math, and 15% because it's rental, the 15 actually get individual deed restrictions for 30 years. We're rehabilitating any existing deed restricted unit as rehab, 131, and then separate, what new ones are you bringing online? And that's the two categories, the 613 over the long haul, and the objective two is the 50. The challenge is, right now, COA does not appear to be reforming, so we are likely going to head into litigation. If I would add anything to Mr. McGoye and Nancy's conversation, it's this, that we, when we go to court, we have to demonstrate that we had an agreement and that we did everything within our power, and that's where we have to make that argument. So that's the challenge, it's not, we have in our powers in municipality redevelopment, which you guys are engaged in with Broad Street West, we have ordinances and set aside, so these are the mechanisms we should be going forward. Now, she's going to show up in court, and they're going to say, well, what happened with Broad Street West, what happened with, and they're going to question down, and we're going to be tried to some degree, and we need to be able to go to say in good faith that we, through a series of mechanisms, were able to face that challenge. Yeah.
Oh, no, no, thank you. Okay. And Mr. Vartan, I think it was the last council meeting, you mentioned that we were not going to go along with the lawsuits with the other municipalities.
Comments through me.
I'm so sorry, through you, President, Council, Council President. Mr. Vartan mentioned that we were not going to follow suit with along the other municipalities that were suing, I'm not sure if I'm using the right language here, fair share housing. And if, after I'm done speaking, if you could just explain that a little bit more, because I don't really know a lot about that, but I know a lot of the other municipalities around us are suing them because they can't make the meet, the needs for affordable housing, so if you could just clarify that a little bit, but I just want to finish my questions, if you don't mind, because my phone might die. So, so that one. With all of the other development around the city of Summit, I know that Chatham is blighting areas to develop, and so when you're saying that in order to get the affordable housing, that we need to redevelop an area, is that something that we would have to do is to blight an area to redevelop since we don't have that much land left and we're out of areas to build, so that's a concern of ours as residents, that we are going to all of a sudden end up being like the Chatham next door, where they're, you know, looking to build big areas and blade areas and tear down buildings, because we have to meet, we have to meet this, now that you're saying it has to be 50, and then who knows what the next round will be, I mean, that number is really big, that's kind of shocking to say, like, what's the next round going to be like? I have one more question after that, and then, sorry. There are some projects down on Morris Avenue, but we're not sure, they haven't gone through that, the zoning or the planning, so we can't confirm that they're in yet, so I know that we're anticipating that maybe something's going to happen, maybe not, but looking what we have, we just have Broad Street West for now. So I think if there's other areas around the towns where, like Ms. Allen was saying, if people want to donate homes, that's great, but if there are other homes that maybe council can look at and say, we can buy those homes if we have money that we mentioned in here, that we can buy them and make apartments out of them, or renovate them, or do something with, instead of tearing down and blading areas within the center of Summit, is that an option, something to think about within, like, the whole area? I don't, I don't know, but trying to look out, because we have to do this obviously quickly in the next couple of years to kind of expand our horizons and say, where else can we put affordable housing, because there's obviously a demand, so that's something. The builder's remedy is kind of frightening, and I know through you, Council President, Mr. Vartan mentioned that, I don't know if he did that to kind of scare us, that Toll Brothers could come in and say, hey, we're going to build Broad Street West, but that is just a little alarming, I didn't know builders could do that, that say, like, hey, we want this project, and if you're not willing to listen to us, we're going to go to the courts, is that something that a builder could do for Broad Street West too? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Can I, can I start, Council President?
Sure.
Because there are, so I think in response to the question, there's a different couple of settlements and lawsuits that you were talking about. The first is that there is municipalities that are voluntarily complying with the court system basically saying, okay, we're doing our settlement now, right? And that's what we did with our, with our agreement with fair share. That is, that's done for us. There are a number of other municipalities now that are still in that process of going through their settlement agreements, that's, is that right?
Yes.
Nancy, okay, so, and then, and then what we were talking about at the last council meeting was that it was submitted to us for consideration that the city of Summit would join with 16 other municipalities in a lawsuit, the purpose of that would be to compel the governor to appoint members to COA. And what I said at the last council meeting was that I don't think that's a good idea. First, because it costs money, an unknown amount of legal fees. Second, I don't think, I'm pretty skeptical of whether or not that would work. And third, the message that it sends, you know, I think, I think what we should be doing is joining with other municipalities that share our values, that understand and recognize that affordable housing is important, that we've tried to build it over the course of the years and make progress, but, and also believe that COA should exist, and advocate with the governor rather than joining a lawsuit to compel him to do something. So that was the difference in what I was talking about last week. And then, how much, Matt, how much is in the trust fund right now?
I mean, obviously it's a moving number because we're accepting COAs all the time, but...
3 million.
That's what we've collected over time, at the moment, I believe there's like approximately 1.5 million in the trust today.
Okay, and 1.2 or 1.4 was spent on the Habitat project?
Correct.
On Marsev, right, okay. So, you know, I think buying property that could be potentially converted into affordable housing is a good idea, it's just we have, you know, 1.4 million, and Summit doesn't get you incredibly far with that.
I just want to address one quick thing, the builder's remedy. Let's also, a lot of what's going on in affordable housing in the state of New Jersey has been going on for a very, very long time. This is stuff that's been on our website, it's stuff that has been very, very much on the forefront of municipalities throughout the state. Whether we like fair share housing or not, they have forced the issue, and there are many towns around us, Chatham being one, who did not build any affordable housing for decades. We've done a much better job of building affordable housing, hence our number is 50, not a couple of hundred. I think other than Michael and I are the only folks on the dais who were involved in the settlement agreement with fair share housing. And one of the reasons that the bipartisan council at the time decided to make this settlement agreement was because of the threat of the builder's remedy. The builder's remedy has been around for a very long time. It is not something that we're thinking about because we're considering the Broad Street West redevelopment. That builder's remedy has been very, very influential in the state of New Jersey for decades. So I just want to, you know, and I think it's because of the Broad Street West redevelopment and the discussion about affordable housing, that it's become, which is a good thing in my mind, it's become sort of a focus of members of the public, and that's great. It's an important thing, there are folks, talk to Vito Gallo, he's been advocating, and Dennis and Harriel, they've been advocating for affordable housing and working hard with, and the Civic Foundation have been working hard with affordable housing for decades in our town, and I'm very, very proud of that. So it's not a new issue, it's not new information, really. Fair share housing, that's something new within the last 15 years?
Yes.
Yeah, but prior to that, COA, and then it's really been, COA's a political football. Let's be honest, it's with the governments, governors, both Governor Murphy and Governor Christie have been tossing it around as a political football. And so here we are, the municipalities are left to try to deal with this and figure it out, and the state of New Jersey, and the governors, plural, really don't care. So that's my opinion.
I'm going to, hopefully I have all of your questions, so forgive me, let me know if I don't answer one correctly, okay? Just to be clear, as far as the builder's remedy goes, right now, the city of Summit has immunity against Mount Laurel lawsuits, and what that means is that no builder can come in and file a builder's remedy. What can happen is a motion to strip the city's immunity if something goes wrong, if the city decides to not satisfy its obligation, if it refuses to do what it needs to do to get to this 50 new unit number. And I think one note of clarification is, the standard is to create a realistic opportunity for the construction of affordable housing. So if you do nothing, and nothing other than what you've done right now, that is not going to be seen as a realistic opportunity to create those 50 units. There needs to be affirmative measures, like, let's say, let's say you refuse to get any affordable units out of Broad Street West, okay? That would be grounds for Fair Share Housing Center to come in and say, here is, here is a realistic opportunity for the production of affordable housing, and you squandered it. And that would be an instance where they could come and strip your immunity, they could come back to court and hold you accountable for that. So those are, I hope that kind of clarifies the 50 new units, do all 50 units have to be built? No, but there's a realistic opportunity for the construction of those units through purchasing land, if that's what the, what the city wants to do, converting, doing a market to affordable program, which we mentioned, where either someone donates the land and a nonprofit creates the units, through redevelopment, through smaller redevelopment, not necessarily a Broad Street West project, but just developers collecting parcels of land and coming in. Those are, those are some examples of that. Did I answer all your questions?
Excuse me, we're not going to do this back and forth. Kevin, no.
Did.
Kevin, stop. Nancy, Nancy, you need to speak into the microphone.
No, I was just asking her if I answered all her questions.
One thing that might just give good context to everybody is, I know, I read about it closely, and I'm sure you are very familiar with it, you talked about Chatham not doing it. There was towns that for years didn't have any developer land, they had huge corporate parks and things like that, and one of them was called Englewood Cliffs.
Correct.
And they, they didn't build anything for years. And then, was it Unilever, what was the big corporate park that went out?
I don't recall.
It was a gigantic corporate park.
Yes, it was.
Out of business. Nabisco, on Route 208, out of business. Toys R Us in Wayne, 193 acres, out of business. Those become developers, they focus in on it immediately, and so what happened up in Englewood Cliffs is it went to court, they were thumbing their nose at it, and they ended up getting hundreds of units on one site. So I mean, the reason that you guys are doing this is you want to not only avoid a builder's remedy, but if the court doesn't think you're complying, they tend to favor the affordable housing, fair share housing, they strip your immunity, and then a builder can come in and build a lot more than what your zoning requires. They can make it much more dense, they can have, there's places right now, you know, without revealing, where they're looking to get 30 to 40 units an acre. So you're talking about affordable, so you're talking about a lot more, much, much higher buildings than what you guys are talking about here. So I think the reason you guys have been complying with all these different things over the years is so you don't end up with, and you guys do have corporate tracts in your town, right now they're viable, but that, there are towns where corporate tracts become unviable, and then you have a big tract of land, and if you haven't met your needs, they come in and say, okay, now you haven't met all these needs, now you have, you know, you have from 1999 all the way up to 2025. You guys have been going along, you met round one, you met round two. You guys have been going along, you met round one, you met round two. There's towns that didn't meet any of the rounds, and now they're in real, real deep trouble. I mean, I've got one town right now that they have to build, right now they're looking at building 5,000 new units in the town so they can meet their affordable housing. That's a disaster.
So through you, Council President. This is all pretty scary, but let's not, we're not trying to scare people, right? What we are trying to do is, look, let's talk about Broad Street West, right? That's what we're talking about. We had in June a proposal that had 20 affordable housing units in it, right? Whatever we come up with next is going to have fewer than 20 affordable housing units, I would guess. The, the, my desire, I think, and maybe others up here agree, would be that if we could try in the next round of whatever we come up with from the developers, to get more than the 15% minimum affordable housing in whatever new Broad Street proposal we get, right? So, so the hope would be, we continue to have our immunity until the agreement's over, and then we, and then we go back and we say, these were the steps that we took, right? And to me, including Broad Street West with some more affordable housing than the bare minimum would be a goal, would be a really solid goal. So that's, that's just me. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, so I think we have some other folks. Ms. Bowen, I think you're next.
Hi, Susan Bowen, 45 Waldron. I have a question for you, and I'll preface it very quickly. I was born in Summit, but I also live in Summit. And the reason I live here is because of what Summit is. I like the fact that it's fully built, so we sort of can know the lay of the land going forward. I live in Lincoln School District, and I love the Lincoln School District because we have, we have these folks and we have these folks, however you define it, I love that. That's why my kids went to Lincoln School, because as I used to tell them, not everybody goes to the Bahamas for vacation. I love that, that's why I live here. I think probably that's why a lot of us live here. And it's not Chatham, you know, which is not fully built and has all these problems and does not have the diversity that we have. But I'm wondering if you have any legislative history or anything of a town like Summit, which is fully built, which is different than a mountain lakes or a Chatham, where this reasonable standard has been tested? And what outcomes have there been? You know, like, I don't know, Moorestown, New Jersey or something, I have no idea. But I bet that there's another place that you might be able to think of that has had this reasonable expectation standard tested in the courts? And I'm wondering how that works? Because I think that the lesson I'm hearing, we're different than Chatham, we don't have that problem. But also, we're fully built, there's no more land to use in Summit. So what has been your experience in someone presenting the same evidence that I think we would be presenting in 2025? Look, we're trying, we've changed the zoning, we're working with this developer on this project. And how has that reasonable expectation had been tested in the courts and what has happened?
I don't have an example with this language itself, but the, the standard is a realistic opportunity, is that what you mean? Or you mean the real, the reasonable?
I can't remember what the defined term is, it's reasonable efforts? Reasonable efforts?
Reasonable steps.
Oh, reasonable steps.
Reasonable steps, which is in my world, very loosey-goosey. I'm just wondering what has happened with, say, Moorestown, New Jersey is the only place that I can think of, not Marstown, the one in South Jersey, a place that's fully built that, what has happened with those? Is there any evidence that shows what has happened in a town like that, where they have said, we're making, we're doing, we're doing what we can?
I don't have a specific example for you, but the way that the city needs to approach this is creating a realistic opportunity for the construction of the courts. That's the standard for Mount Laurel. Okay? That, what that means is either you secure through redevelopment, which would most likely be the lion's share of what happened within the city, right? Redevelopment, either small R or big R, you know, with Broad Street West, which would probably yield the largest amount of units for the city, right? So you'd have to have a developer's agreement with, redevelopment agreement with Broad Street West. They would have to be before the planning board, they'd have to be moving along toward constructing, right? So then you would have, you would have to implement, you would use all the mechanisms through COA that are available. There's a market to affordable program. You would study the feasibility of doing a market to affordable program within the city. We would look at city-owned property to see if there's any that could, that could develop through a nonprofit builder. The best example of that would be the Ashwood, Ashwood Court?
Court.
Is that, okay, Ashwood Court, just wanted to make sure, for a name. Ashwood Court, where there are, there is a potential of two units to be created there. So what we would do is, we would demonstrate to the court that we have a developer's agreement with a builder. So every, we would collect every piece of evidence to show we are chipping away at this number. And I'm saying this as we're going through it, not in 2026, I'm saying right now. If somebody came in and said, you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, how would I demonstrate to the court how that would happen? Does that make sense?
Yes.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Because I started talking about Mount Laurel things, and then, you know, people are like, what are you talking about? So there need, there need to be, there needs to be an objective demonstration that these units are going to be built. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So either you have zoning board approvals for a project, you have planning board approvals for a project, you have a developer's agreement that, that this developer promises to build a four-unit apartment complex in an old, in an older, bigger house.
Right, and six of them are?
Right, exactly. So, so it would be, it would be those type of things that you know those units are going to be built. That would create the realistic opportunity.
Second question.
And I guess the challenge is, we are the test. I think to the mayor's point about this being kicked around is, we as municipalities are going into 2025 not knowing what we will face. So today's the day we have to figure out what is in our power to be able to bring these units, because we will be the test when we go either to the court in 2025 or call, which will not likely be established. And what will you have to demonstrate that you took all the reasonable steps? Broad Street West will be pulled apart and combed through, where were your misstepings? Where did or didn't you have opportunity that you squandered? And every single mechanism that we have will be explored, and fair share will come to the table and say, this was a lost opportunity, you gave them 50 and they could have but didn't. And that's why we're going to make an argument that it should be 200, 250, et cetera. So, and I'm not trying to wave a stick, but to the point that we are the guinea pig as municipalities going into 2025, we don't know. There are lawsuits currently, I mean, they do exist, but I think that's part of our challenge.
I would think that we're probably in the middle of the pack cherry picking wise, because we are doing something and we're not Chatham, who Chatham was a year ago or whatever, before they started to solve the problem. And then I have another question or comment, you reviewed this handout, right?
Yes.
And so this handout says it's an objective, it doesn't say it's an obligation, and it talks about progress. And I'm just, I think that those terms are important. And I think it makes it seem like it's got to be 50 by 2025 or something terrible's going to happen. And I think that the truth is somewhere in the middle, rather than got to have 50, or got to have plans for 50. I just might, and I think if it were an obligation, it would say obligation to instead of objective to. So that's my.
These are listed as obligations, rehabilitation obligation, new construction obligation. The objectives are how we accomplish the obligation. So they are called obligations at the beginning of the presentation, just to be clear.
I was at the airport, sorry.
Oh, I love it, that's okay, we'll welcome back. No, but I think it's a fair point about threading the needle. I think the challenge for what we're trying to accomplish here is being realistic about what's coming ahead, which we don't know.
Right, and I think also to be realistic is Toll Brothers isn't going to do this if they're not making money. So that's another piece in the needle, in a fully built town with very little, either city-owned or open land. And I think that we're in probably better than most, we're certainly better than the Chatham's. And that's my only point, is that maybe we can just find the loosey-goosey middle here. And we all agree, I think we all agree, we all want affordable housing. We want, I certainly wanted it when my kids were little, I wanted them to be in a school like Lincoln. I chose that. But I think when we start saying it's an obligation, we have to do this, I think it really gets tempers and things up. And I think that the middle is somewhere in between. That's my only point.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Good evening, Ms. Hamlet.
Good evening. Thank you, Delia Hamlet. I just have a few questions, Susan covered most of them. I think most of us in the room just, just want to stop talking about this. If I were to ask for a set of hands, we just, we all live here, we're raising kids, we just want to know what the number is. It's, it's, we don't need to sit here until 12 o'clock, like, is it 36? Is it 50? It's all factual, it's all in this document, right? If everybody just looks at this document, it's right here. We've litigated over this. So can we just talk about what this is and what we need to do? Because it's all here. And I'm just confused why this is so complicated and why we're fear mongering over builder's remedy and what could happen in the fourth round? Because I'm reading an article that actually you're all going to see this week in Atlantic City, and it's written by Linda Galella, and it's called, "As Fourth Round of Affordable Housing Obligationeers, Municipal Municipal Municipalities Should Plan Accordingly." The third round covered the period from 1999 to July 1st, 2025. As a result, municipalities that have court-approved third-round plans enjoy financial judgments of compliance and repose and immunity from Mount Laurel litigation until July 1st, 2025. This includes immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits, because we've been hearing so much about that lately. Constitutional compliance actions and any other challenges brought under Mount Laurel principles. To extend these immunities, towns will need to prepare and seek approvals as fourth-round plans. As for the methodology for determining a municipality's fourth-round affordable housing obligation, it should be more straightforward than it was in the third round. As set forth in the Fair Housing Act, the fourth round will include a 10-year period from 2025 to 2035. Through you, Council President, I think Mr. Vartan, you mentioned that many municipalities have settled. Could you provide a number on how many municipalities have settled under the fair share?
No.
So 340 out of 342, I believe?
There are 567 municipalities in New Jersey, so 340 out of that.
According to Fair Share Housing Center, 342 towns have filed declaratory judgment actions since 2015.
Doesn't mean they've settled them, though, Ms. Hamlet.
In response to Mount Laurel. Therefore, 340 municipal fair share plans have been approved. I mean, I'm just, my question is.
340 out of 567, Ms. Hamlet.
My question is, though, what's the number? Is it 36? Is it 36 or is it 50? It's just an easy question.
Currently, the obligation is 50.
But if we make our best effort, what's going to happen? We've litigated over this. What's, we're making our best effort. How many acres do we have of vacant land available? What's the number? 2.34.
That's not actually, that's what you're saying, but there are other ways to calculate it.
That is our, that is our vacant land analysis, it's 2.34. Am I, am I wrong? If somebody, if I am, I'm willing, I'm willing to, I'm literally willing to say I'm wrong. But it's 2.34, and it's going to be 2.34 minus whatever we do in the fourth round. It's not rocket science. It's 2.34. Whether it's 50 or 36, we still have 2.34 acres of land. And our entire community is here till 12 o'clock at night because you can't give us that number. Is it 36 or 50?
That's enough. I think, I think she's answered the question, it's 50, okay? The 36, we've, we've accomplished the 36.
Best effort.
That's correct.
And it's best effort. I'm just asking, in your opinion.
You're creating a realistic opportunity for those 50 units.
At 36.
No.
So we've.
We've already created.
Created 36.
36 is the RDP, and we've done that.
We've already, we've already satisfied that with in excess, and the 50 is a separate obligation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Good evening, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, Council President, Mayor, latest members of common council, Jim Bennett, 38 Fairview Avenue. Just following up on Mr. McGoy's comments, I understand the number's 50. Now, let's say purely hypothetically, we, we make our reasonable efforts and somehow we come up short. Do I assume correctly that if affordable housing will bring us before probably the superior court, we'll be in front of a man or a woman that wears a black robe? Is that correct? And the issue before the court then becomes, did the city make reasonable efforts to get to the 50 number? And that can go one of two ways, either the court, by the way, would that be a jury trial or would it be a bench trial?
It would be a bench trial.
Okay, thanks. So the court would decide either as a finding that the city made its reasonable efforts or it didn't make its reasonable efforts. And if the city made its reasonable efforts, do I assume that then immunity would be preserved? Or, I'm sorry, that, what are they called? Yeah, reasonable efforts.
It's hard to say, because I don't know what's going to happen in the next, in the next round, but what typically happens in a, maybe this will answer your question, and if it doesn't, please tell me. When you file a declaratory judgment action, like we did in 2015, you also file a motion for temporary immunity from builder's remedies from other Mount Laurel lawsuits, right? So in that application for a declaratory judgment action, in that application, and we'd file the motion for temporary immunity, we would demonstrate that we were voluntarily complying, which would be, we were satisfying the terms of our settlement agreement, and we would demonstrate that and say to the judge, this is what we've done, judge, here's where we want to go, please give us temporary immunity so that we don't have to fight builders while we're trying to comply. Does that make sense?
Would that, would that be in, what's the, what's the expression? Would that be, would that be a remedy during the litigation? Because I assume that the fact, the factual issue before the court is, did the city make reasonable efforts? Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so part of the decision by the judge would be whether or not the city made reasonable efforts, and that would either go towards the, towards the application for immunity. And then I suppose the judge would craft a, craft a remedy as to what the, what was expected from the city going forward. Is that how you would see that developing?
Yes, generally speaking, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Good evening.
Hi, Rachel Kramer, 88 Elm Street. So back to Broad Street West, if we adhere to zoning, which would put us up 72 units, and came up with 14 affordable housing, which is more than 15, more than 15%, closer to 20%, would that be considered a reasonable effort or a best effort?
I would think so, as, as long as we're capturing the maximum amount of affordable housing we can.
Or more, right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, so we don't need 150 units to get to a best effort, right? We don't need to blow through, we don't need to blow through zoning, and so as you're, yeah, so.
I think that, I think that you're making assumptions that, that, that the attorney is not aware of in this statement.
No, I was just getting, I just wanted to get a sense of what would be considered a best effort.
But if we could have gotten 20 and we only get 14, maybe that's not a best effort.
If we could get 20 by blowing through our zoning, sure, maybe, but we could, you could also, you could ask for 20 affordable housing in a 70-unit building.
But that's really not part of the conversation.
This is a lot of speculation.
What was the question? So I wanted to know if that would be considered a best effort. So now that we're going back and forth with the developers, what percentage of affordable housing is this council advocating for? Is it now more than 15%?
We are, we are not at this point back and forth with the developers. We've, at the We've, at this point, what we are doing is, you know, we're looking at what the residents for Summit have proposed and exploring that option. So I can't tell you, we're not back and forth with them on a number at this point.
Okay, thanks.
Just to be clear, Council President, we have no proposal, right, from the developer?
Right.
We have no proposal from...
Right. We are looking at resident for Summit's proposal.
Yes, just because I think it bears, I think it bears repeating.
Yes. Okay, fair enough.
And just, I'm sorry, before you start, just to clarify my answer, if there's a percentage of affordable housing that is economically feasible within the redevelopment project, that would be your best effort, whatever that may be. It may be too expensive to do 20%, but it's reasonable to do 15%. It all depends on the economics of the project and the design and also, and all of those other things. And I don't know what's been proposed by Broad Street West. I don't want anyone to think that I am declaring that whatever's on the table is reasonable right now, because I don't know what it is, so.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, Bob Polaski. Actually came to complain about Maple Street, but...
That, we'll have public comments afterwards.
No, I know, but, you know, this is all fascinating. So who drafted this settlement agreement?
My office, I did not. I was not involved in it. My office and Fair Share Housing Center with input from the city.
And reasonable steps needed to achieve the goal of facilitating the construction. Are any of these terms defined in the settlement agreement?
You mean, you mean an actual definition of each? I just want to make sure I'm on the... I think they're not. I think it's so that the city...
Are they terms of art in the fair share housing arena?
The term of art that is used is the realistic opportunity for the construction of affordable housing. And that's going to be the standard by which we are, by which we are judged. The reason that the language is the way that it is is so that the city can be creative in how it creates those 50 units.
Or maybe it's that way because somebody had the foresight to see that maybe we wouldn't be able to do 50, I understand is the number? And that they drafted a nice settlement agreement here that gives us a little wiggle room so that if we make efforts to do certain things, it would be okay if we didn't hit 50, right?
We have to create a realistic opportunity for the 50.
To create, so it'll take all reasonable steps.
That's not saying, right, but that's not saying, so the reason that the language is the way that it is is so that there is not an obligation that commits the city to build a 50-unit affordable, 100% affordable project that also commits it to bond to create that affordable project. So that's why it's written the way that it is.
So my last comment on this is that a lot of people here tonight that are representing Summit taking positions here that we might not want to have on a record anywhere. And, you know, if this ever does come to litigation, why would we take positions that we have to do things that, it's really not that clear in here? Why wouldn't we maximize our arguments that, you know, we can do what this says and facilitate or whatever? I mean, people are in here making legal interpretations about reasonable opportunities and reasonable steps and all this stuff. It's not even defined in here. I don't know.
Thank you for your comments.
I think we should do better.
Okay, are there any other comments? So anything else from council? Anyone want to ask anything? Okay, thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate it. And maybe we'll take a short break if anyone, if people want to take a stretch, seventh inning stretch. We're going to start the meeting again. Anyone who's talking, if you could just take it outside, please, thanks. All right, so we're now up to public comments. So anyone who has a comment, please step up. We're going to hold it to a strict three minutes because it's already to 10 o'clock, okay? Good evening.
Hi, Bob Polaski, 3 Crest Acre Court. I have questions and comments about three items. The process of closing a road, ordinance 22-3255, and redacted Oprah documents. At the end of the last meeting, the city solicitor repeatedly referred to the process to close a road under the pedestrian mall statute as arduous. Permanent or temporary, it's arduous. I'd like to hear from the city engineer about how hard of a process he thinks it would be to close Maple Street, either permanently or temporarily. And if there's a difference, why is there a difference? What is the process from the city engineer's perspective? What's been done so far? What's left to do? How long will it take to get NJDOT's denial or approval for either temporary or permanent closure? In the last meeting, the city solicitor stated that the reason the council previously was able to close Maple Street without going through the arduous process required by the pedestrian mall statute was that the governor's executive order relaxed various restrictions. If that was the case, why did you neglect to mention Governor Murphy's executive order in the ordinance? And why did you instead repeatedly cite to the pedestrian mall statute as support for the most recent extended closure in the ordinance? This was incredibly misleading to the public. In the ordinance, you stated the common council finds, and then you went, and then you ran through the five statutory prerequisites to establishing a pedestrian mall, including Maple Street is improved to its maximum feasible width, reasonable alternative routes exist for private vehicles, private vehicles on Maple Street constitute a hazard to the health and safety of pedestrians, properties can reasonably and adequately receive emergency vehicles and deliveries, and it is in Summit's best interest, adjacent property owner's best interest and the highest and best use of Maple Street to be a pedestrian mall. You found all five to be true, and you framed it in such a way as to suggest that you had done your due diligence and come to the informed conclusion that each of these five things was true. Based on what? You told us at the last meeting you couldn't answer questions about these requirements until you first heard SDI's report. If that's true, how could the council have found all five statutory requirements to be satisfied back in May as you represented to the public in the ordinance? November 4th, the city responded to Ryan Philmit's Oprah requests. In it are many redactions based on so-called deliberative process privilege that exempts inter or intra-agency advisory, consultative, or deliberative material from Oprah production. Redacted are a number of emails between Mayor Radius, Aaron Schreger, and Nancy Adams of SDI. SDI is not a state, county, or city agency, as far as I know. Does the city still contend that these communications are nevertheless privileged? On what grounds? If so, may other members of the council see them? May other members of SDI see them? And if they're not privileged, when will you reproduce these documents without redaction? I have a couple extra copies of this. Here are the Oprah documents, and I tabbed the redacted email for you.
Thanks. Thank you for your comments. We'll have to get back to you on this. I don't, I...
Still waiting for my comments from last...
We are working on it, but a lot of the things you asked for were speculative and things that we can't answer until we have the presentation.
You had it in May?
No, the presentation, you know, about what we're going to do in the future. So any other questions or comments? Not from you, sir. Okay. All right, so I'm going to close the comment period then, and we'll move on to the regular agenda. We're on to, where are we? Ordinances for Hearing. So Madam Clerk, could you please, am I in the right place?
Yes.
I am, okay. Could you please read the first ordinance?
Ordinance number 22-3267, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Departments Created, Section 2-15 Department of Police, Subsections 2-15.9, Eligibility for Promotional Examinations, and Subsection 2-15.10 Promotions, and 2-15.11 Qualifications of Superior Officers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Levine?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to open the hearing for ordinance 22-3267, which serves to codify the existing internal promotional process within our police department. The process is based on merit, experience, education, demonstrated ability, examinations, and a written submission. I've had the privilege of participating in this process several times now, and I've seen how well it works to distinguish between several highly qualified candidates. It's a logical way to assign value to different experiences and accomplishments that the candidates have. I move to open the hearing for this ordinance.
I second. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public on this item? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close the hearing. And so now we'll take it as an ordinance for final consideration. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number 22-3267, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 4 Departments Created, Section 2-15 Department of Police, Subsections 2-15.9, Eligibility for Promotional Examinations, 2-15.10 Promotions, and 2-15.11 Qualifications of Superior Officers.
Okay, Councilmember Levine?
Thank you, Council President. We previously held a hearing on this ordinance, and I now move this ordinance for final consideration.
Second. Okay, Madam Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to ordinances for introduction. Madam Clerk, could you please read the first title?
ID number 9594, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, Subsection 7-8.5 Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets.
Okay, so Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. I want to quickly mention that this ordinance is one of several parking ordinances being introduced today as well as on December 4th. Together, they're aimed at expanding the city's parking availability in downtown and beyond, increasing turnover in parking spots in areas in most need of short-term parking, improving the flow of traffic, and reducing incidence of double parking and parking in crosswalks and other non-spots. It's my hope that this block of parking ordinances being introduced today and on December 4th will lead to a better experience driving through downtown, as well as improvements in pedestrian and vehicle safety. So this ordinance is to add employee-only parking on a portion of the north side of Broad Street between Walnut Street and Park Avenue, right by the Salerno-Dwayne Car Dealership. This will provide 17 new employee-only parking spots, available from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. These new employee parking spots will also add the side benefit of establishing a section of Broad Street as one lane much sooner after Park Avenue, a change that will reduce the tendency to speed up through that intersection there, Walnut and Broad, in order to win the race to the single lane. Both the Summit Safety Committee and the Union County Engineering Department are in favor of this change, and I move to introduce this ordinance.
I enthusiastically second.
Okay, so could we please have a roll call on that?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. And the hearing on that will be on December 6th. Okay, so moving on to the next ordinance for introduction.
ID number 9962, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, Subsection 7-8.5 Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets.
Okay, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to change the 90-minute parking spaces on the north side of Union Place, the side across from the train station and tracks, to be 30-minute parking spaces. 15-minute spots on that side will remain untouched at 15 minutes. An upcoming ordinance dealing with parklets factors into this as well, so I'm going to go into a little bit of preview of detail. Union Place, in theory, will be limited to sidewalk cafes for outdoor dining with no parking spaces used for that purpose on Union Place going forward. So that would free up those 30-minute spots along that side of Union Place year-round. Residents and business owners on the Parking Advisory Committee agreed to that Union Place was an area in most, most in need of parking spot turnover, and that these 30-minute spots would help facilitate that for this important section of our downtown. I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, we have one last community programs and parking services.
ID number 9565, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7 Traffic, Section 7-8 Parking, Subsection 7-8.5 Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets.
Okay, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to change some parking spots downtown into 15-minute spots. There are currently 40 curbside pickup spots throughout downtown. This ordinance will convert 22 of those curbside pickup spots to 15-minute spots, which will allow the remaining 18 curbside pickup spots to revert back to their 90-minute spots. This strikes a balance between the need for short-term, these short-term spots established as curbside pickup during the pandemic, and the need to now return some of these spots back to 90 minutes. I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, and then we'll go on to finance, the first finance ordinance for introduction.
ID number 9769, an ordinance appropriating funds for school improvements in the city of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, and authorizing issuance of $37,429,555, school bonds or notes of the city to meet said appropriation.
Okay, Councilmember Vartan?
Yes, thank you, Council President. This is a bond ordinance for the school improvements that were outlined by the Board of Education earlier this year. The total amount of this bond issuance is $37,429,555, and there's three things I'd like to point out. First, the Board of Education held information sessions and meetings on these projects. They voted to approve, and then the Board of School estimate that consists of two members of the Board of Ed, the mayor, and two members of council also voted to approve these expenditures as well. Second, the schools cannot issue their own debt. So that's why this ordinance is being introduced here by common council. And third, the hearing for this ordinance will be held at the council meeting on December 6th. I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second it.
Okay, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, moving on to the last, that's the last finance ordinance, okay. So could you please read it, Madam Clerk?
ID number 9985, ordinance providing for the improvement of the Summit Free Public Library in and by the city of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, and appropriating $464,829.80 and 80 cents therefrom, therefore, from various sources.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance appropriating $464,829.80. This is for the purpose of installing a generator at the library. Three important things about this. First, this will allow for major electrical, heating, cooling, Wi-Fi, public computers, library materials, and programs to continue running in the case of a power outage, continuing to be a resource for the community. Second, this does mean at some point it could potentially be incorporated into the city's emergency plan. And third, funding for this comes from a variety of sources, including the library's own budget and a very large grant from the library construction bond grant that exceeds $180,000. So hearing for this ordinance will be December 6th. I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second it.
Okay, could we please have a roll call?[1720.83]
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay. And so the hearings on all of these ordinances will be on December 6th. We'll move on to resolutions now. We have a few finance resolutions. Councilmember Barton, would you like to get started?
Yes, please. Thank you, Council President. This is number 9971, and this resolution authorizes the transfer of appropriations within the operating budget. This is a common occurrence at the end and the beginning of the budget year. The total amount of this transfer is $132,000. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. Hearing none. We'll go ahead with the roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay. Resolution carries, and we'll move on to finance number two.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 9972. This resolution authorizes the cancellation of the emergency appropriation related to the joint-meeting's flood mitigation project. As promised, when the resolution was passed creating the emergency appropriation, the city has increased its funding for our share of Phase 1 of the project. In the last several meetings, we introduced, had a hearing, and adopted the bond ordinance for that appropriation, and now that that is done, we are canceling the emergency. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Okay. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. We need a roll call on this as well?
Yes. Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Barton?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. We'll move on to finance number three.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. This is number 9964. This resolution authorizes the award of a contract to Foley Power Systems for the installation of the generator at the Summit Free Public Library in the amount of $405,137. This quote was obtained from the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Cooperative Pricing System. This is being done through council because the library does not have the legal authority to award and pay for these types of capital improvements, and it is certified upon adoption of the ordinance on which we are having a hearing December 6th, as I just mentioned. So, I move to adopt this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll move on to finance number four. Councilmember Barton?
Thank you, Council President. This is number 9973. This resolution authorizes an agreement with the law firm of Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood LLP for 2023 bond counsel services in an amount not to exceed $60,000. Robert Beinfield from this firm has been our bond counsel for several years, and the finance team is happy with his, quote, "thorough and conscientious service," and when he's attended finance committee meetings, I have always found him to be highly professional and knowledgeable. Also, in other good news, the fees for 2023 have not changed from this year, so I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, community programs and parking services, we're going to push this resolution to the next meeting on December 6th. So, we'll move on now to capital projects and community services. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9950, to authorize 2023 Earth Day activities. Summit Environmental Commission is requesting permission to hold the 16th Annual Citywide Earth Day Cleanup Event this spring. This worthy annual event provides great volunteer opportunities for people of all ages to do a cleanup of public properties and open spaces. The Summit Environmental Commission is proposing the Earth Day Cleanup to be held on Saturday, April 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, with a rain date on April 23rd. Some sites being considered are the Village Green, the Park Line, Martins Brook Park, Tatlock Field, and areas surrounding Washington School, among others. Some county sites will be included, and the Summit Environmental Commission is working separately with Union County to obtain permission for those areas. One thing I'd like to highlight is that since the Single Use Plastics Reduction Law went into effect in May, there has been an astounding reduction in the amount of plastic bags being cleaned up. And I move this resolution.
I second. Okay. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We'll move on to capital projects number two. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9936, to authorize national cooperative purchase Sourcewell Sewer Camera Truck for $249,921.22. The 2022 sanitary sewer capital budget approved funding for the purchase of a sewer camera truck to be used by the Sewer Maintenance Unit of the Division of Public Works. The truck will be a new 2023 T350 Ford Transit van fitted with a Rover X camera setup. The city does not currently have a sewer camera truck, and this new equipment will help the city identify problems much sooner and save the city money in the long run. The new sewer camera truck will be purchased from Jet Vac Equipment LLC of Dixon, Illinois via the Sourcewell Contract, which is a national co-op, and will result in a price that is 25% off the list price. I move this resolution.
I second. Are there any comments or questions from council members? Comments from members of the public? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have one more capital projects and community services resolution.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 9932, to amend professional services agreement. Broad Street West Redevelopment Planning and Real Estate Advisory Services, Phase 6, additional fees $60,043. In February, the city authorized a professional advisory agreement with Topology LLC for the Broad Street West Redevelopment Project in an amount not to exceed $65,000. That contract amount was an estimated cost based on past progress and did not anticipate the increased workload that was generated by the project alterations. Even though the funding is reimbursed by the developers through the escrow account, the contract needs to be amended in accordance with the local public finance laws. Topology has provided a proposal in the amount of $60,043 to complete the work for 2022 and to cover any overage from the original contract. That brings the total contract amount to $125,043. I move this resolution.
I second. Are there any comments from members of council?
I'm so sorry. Just a quick question, Councilman. Is this for a redraw? Is that what you're saying?
All the alterations that were worked on, you know, we paused the project and going back.
Okay.
And amending all kinds of things.
Okay. So, like, you were talking about tonight for the residents of Summit, that kind of redraw?
No.
No, just the additional... Okay.
They did a lot of work over the summer. I think that's what it... Is that what it is?
And then some. Like, it's been past work that's been done and projections, I guess, through this year. So...
Right.
That's what that... We're just amending the not-to-exceed number based on past and what they think remaining year-old.
Right. So, it's a not-to-exceed number. It doesn't mean that's necessary.
Correct. It's just additional funds over the original contract amount.
Right. And the other thing is that this will be reimbursed as part of the escrow with the redevelopers.
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay. Any questions from members of the public?
I have a question.
Sure.
I don't have the numbers on me for Topology, but I was under the impression it was hundreds of thousands of dollars that's been in the escrow for Topology so far from the city. Michael, through you, Council President, Mr. Rogers, do you have that update? I mean, I really thought it was over the 500,000 number, so seeing just only $60,000 for Topology to go back and make a couple adjustments, it's not that big of a number. I'm not saying like, oh, that's, you know, oh, it's such a huge number, but it's just questioning it, saying that's not that much money. But I really thought that we have paid a lot. I thought it was even maybe close to $700,000. Am I wrong on this?
I'm not sure what number you're referring to, but you might be looking at, for many years of their services under contracts, you might be looking at a total number, and that also involved the master, you know, the master plan reexamine, may not be all related, but I don't know what number you're referring to.
So, just going for Broad Street West, I can't imagine their services have only been $60,000.
No, this is Phase 6.
Phase 6. Okay. So, that's a little more clarification.
Yeah. Each contract has been broken up.
It's like, I think they're annual.
It's a scope of work that's been broken up into different phases, and this is this year's amount that we're talking about.
But this is a not-to-exceed amount, so it means that we're not necessarily spending all of it. We're authorizing up to that amount, and we lay out the money, and then it's reimbursed through the escrow account.
Escrow. And is that a timeframe for this next phase, then?
This is the 2022 contract.
But is there, is like, Phase 6 just 2022? Is that what Phase 6 is?
Pretty much.
Or is it like a monthly couple of months?
No, no. It's this year. It's this scope of work that's defined under their proposal for this year.
And you said they were working this summer, so have they come up with anything? Because in my discussions with residents for Summit, I did talk to L&amp;M a little bit. I didn't know if you guys had any other discussions with them about some other ideas.
There's a lot of work, other than just a concept, you know, development plan, but there's been other discussions just even post that June time period, things that we've talked with, the meeting with the developers. Every time we talk with the developers, every time we engage our planners...
Trying to get a little out of you, Mr. Rogers.
There's costs. So, nothing's...
Well, I look forward to the conversation and seeing what you guys come up with after a meeting with you at our town hall. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. So, all right. Any other questions or comments on this topic? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, we're now moving on to safety and health. Councilmember Levine?
Thank you, Council President. First resolution is number 9988. It's to authorize acceptance of a sub-grant award of the federal fiscal year of 2022 of the Emergency Management Performance Grant and Emergency Management Agency Assistance in the amount of $10,000. These funds are to be used toward emergency management operations, including enhancing the city's ability to prevent, protect against, respond to, and recover from acts of terrorism, natural disasters, and other catastrophic events and emergencies. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second. Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to safety and health, number two.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed in closed session, resolution number 9989 is to appoint Krista Lee Caraballo to the position of police officer within the Summit Police Department. I interviewed her and was very impressed with her experience so early on in her career,